I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Farver School Committee for December 9th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. LaRavi?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Yeah.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meetings through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. We're gonna do the recognition awards right now, so we'll go down to the microphone and we'll do those.
Does that require a motion, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
Does that require a motion to move it before citizens input?
It's already changed on the agenda.
What'd you say?
It's changed on the agenda.
It's changed on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
On the weekend of November 3rd, the BMC Durfee High School Marching Band traveled to Allentown, Pennsylvania. And this evening, on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to recognize them for their winning the U.S. Band's Division 1A National Championship. Are they here? Yes? Oh, having a picture?
Next, we'll have the student comment, Brooke Tobekis.
In November, 11th and 12th graders in Trio were invited for the First Generation Day Celebration, where students participated in a college fair, meeting representatives from over 25 colleges and universities, heard from first-generation students and their personal experiences, as well as how Trio provided support to complete high school and successfully enroll in college. The event concluded with a networking lunch provided by Trio, offering students the chance to connect with one another. Then we had a gratitude challenge that happened during advisory, where students had the opportunity to write notes to staff in the building to show their appreciation and have their notes delivered to the staff members that they wrote to. There's also a construction partnership with the New England Laborers Union, which is the first of its kind in the state of Massachusetts. And it's aimed at creating pathways to high-wage, high-skill construction careers for students enrolled in the Construction Craft Laborers Program at Durfee. Then we had DECA Day on the Hill, which was in November. And Durfee's DECA program brought nine outstanding students to the Massachusetts State House for DECA Day on the Hill. During the day, our chapter was honored to receive a certificate of congratulations from the Massachusetts House of Representatives, acknowledging the commitment and success of the students and advisors of the Durfee High School DECA program in preparing emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. This recognition highlighted the ongoing achievements and the dedication of our DECA community. Coming up soon, we have a Day at Santa's Workshop, which is an event that's organized by Fred TV, but activities are run by student volunteers, where elementary school students with good attendance are invited to Durfee for the day, where they make holiday crafts and have story time with Santa. And then it's also worth noting that our pep rally was very successful, with lots of students participating in skits and showing school spirit. And to top that off, our football team won against New Bedford on Thanksgiving Day.
Thank you, Brooke. Next up, item number five. Sorry, item number four, citizens' input. Now, remember, we did limit it to a half an hour, so I'm gonna ask people to be respectful of that and stay on the three minutes. First up is Randy Dudek, Rolling Green Fall River.
Thank you all. In 2001, author and filmmaker wrote about schools in America. I agreed with the sentiment when I first read it, and his words resonate even stronger with me today. He wrote, quote, "I don't know about you, but I want the people who have the direct attention of my child more hours a day than I do treated with tender, loving care. This is my kid they are preparing for this world. You would think society's attitude would be something like, 'Teachers, thank you so much for devoting your life to my child.' Is there anything... Is there anything I could do to help you? Is there anything you need? I am here for you. Why? Because you're helping my child, my baby, learn and grow. Not only will you be largely responsible for her ability to make a living, but your influence will greatly affect how she views the world, what she knows about other people in the world, and how she will feel about herself. I want her to believe that she can attempt anything, that no doors are closed, and that no dreams are too distant. I am entrusting the most valuable person in my life to you for seven hours each day. You are thus one of the most important people in my life. When my family and I moved to Fall River three summers ago, I was admittedly nervous about things I had read online about the school district. But I can happily say that in my family's experience, our time first at the Sylvia School and now at Morton have been nothing but wonderful for the growth of my two daughters. With perfectly wonderful up until about a month ago, when one of my kids came home from school sad that her favorite teacher was leaving to take a, quote, "opportunity in a different state." I asked her if she happened to know where the teacher was leaving for, hoping it would be anyone out of 48 other states. But no, this treasured teacher was leaving Fall River to take a job in the far-off land of Rhode Island. No offense intended to our neighbors at the Ocean State. Now, I can admit, I've only heard one-size views on the ongoing negotiations between the FREA and this committee. And I am completely open to the possibility that our teachers' requests are being heard more than they believe that they are. However, it is very clear that our teachers do not feel that we are here for them, that we are not ready to do anything we can to help them, that they are not some of the most important people in our lives. And that needs to change. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Alex Bradley. I'll need a waiver.
Point of information, I don't believe there's any residency requirement within our rules. I don't believe a vote would be necessary.
I'll go with that. Dr. Dias, Julian Street, Pawtucket. Three minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Last time I spoke to the committee, my message was of how much I love my job, how much I love this community, and how much I don't want to leave it. Every year, as I'm scraping pennies together and driving 45 minutes to work with a difficult, high-need population in a Level 4 school, my friends, colleagues, and family look on in disbelief. I have so many family, friends, and past colleagues who work in other districts, including an assistant superintendent, who asks me every year at Thanksgiving why I haven't left Fall River yet. I'm constantly needing to defend myself to my parents, my husband, and others alike. My reason for staying has always been the kids. I got my first teaching job here, and I have been at the same job for eight years. Not to toot my own horn, but I'm a darn good teacher. I'm good at what I do, and no one is perfect, including teachers, but everyone I come in contact with can tell I immerse myself in this work. I believe these kids need an educator like me, one who is fully committed and puts the students first always, even if getting Christmas presents for all of them means not having basic necessities that I need for myself. I ended my last speech last time with this sentiment. I don't want to have to choose between being a good mom and being a teacher here. I so desperately want to do both, but it is becoming so clear that that is impossible. I heard a quote recently that rocked me to my core. As a teacher, my students get me at my best, and my family gets the rest. I really want you to listen to that. I am willing to do this hard work, I am willing to travel, but I have debt collectors calling me for unpaid bills. I had to borrow from my pension to buy groceries. My credit card is maxed out due to using it to pay for my master's degree that was required of me to keep my job. Again, I was willing to do all this and break myself for these kids. However, when the FRPS Facebook page shared misinformation the day before Thanksgiving, when very few people have seen the true disrespect and gaslighting that goes on in our bargaining meetings, my heart actually broke. I was willing to do it all and still be in financial failure, but for what? For a district that clearly doesn't care about me. That is why, with a heavy heart, I announced that I am officially looking elsewhere for a job. Not again, I can't cry twice, that's too much. One was enough. I do not intend to come back next year because I can't. I will continue to fight so that these kids don't lose even more amazing educators. I will stay for this year because my kids need me, but my family needs me too. So to any of the families of students or students themselves who may be watching tonight, just know it's not because of you. I love you so much. And I'm sorry, I can't afford to be your teacher. Please, Mayor Coogan, come to the next committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ava Wilkins, Third School Street, Bristol.
Hello. Every day, I tell my students to work hard and that they will achieve their dreams. When I was in their seat, my dream has always been to be a teacher. Thankfully, I have achieved that dream with my degree in secondary education and my master's degree in special education all by the age of 23. It is also my dream to stay here and retire in the Fall River Public Schools, especially at Durfee High School. Unfortunately, my dream has also meant that I now have to live paycheck to paycheck while having a master's degree. To make extra money, I tutor twice a week, picked up a fifth class, I coach volleyball in the fall season, and I'm a junior class advisor. All of these positions require ample time and energy. This also doesn't even include the extra tasks that I do during my day as a special education teacher. While pursuing my dream of becoming a teacher, I chose to continue my career at Durfee High School because I love it here. I moved my life from Long Island, New York, to Fall River, Massachusetts, so I could continue to teach here. I've continued to stay because of my students and my coworkers, but I don't deserve to live paycheck to paycheck with a master's degree in my field. Our students deserve to have teachers. Are you aware of how many students get sent to the cafeteria because there's no teacher for their class? When we are not paying our educators appropriately, no one wants to work here. Positions stay open for long periods of time because those potential applicants are going to Brockton, New Bedford, Taunton. Our students learn not to get attached because at the end of the day, we have to make the tough decision to leave and get jobs at different schools for higher pay. Every year, I get asked, "Are you coming back next year?" I asked Mayor Coogan and the school committee to reach a settlement that shows respect for our professionalism and dedication and demonstrates a commitment to retain and attract the best possible educators. Our students deserve it. It's time for a pay correction so young teachers like me can see a future here in Fall River.
Thank you. Delana Branson, Water Street, Portsmouth. Three minutes, please. Thank you.
I'm an SLP in my seventh year at Fall River. I'm standing here tonight on behalf of two groups. One, the students of Fall River Public Schools. And two, those compassionate, skilled, talented, and dedicated folks sitting behind me in person and in spirit. I did not grow up in this city. I can move and make more money with a smaller workload somewhere else. So why am I here? Because I show up for students alongside some of the finest, most admirable professionals I've ever known in my 24 years as an SLP, showing up for students who deserve access to the appropriate educational support and services but do not have that access due to our recruitment and retention crisis. Last school year, I wrote 300 letters notifying families that their children were not receiving the speech services on their IEP. Over 76% of related service job offers made declined with the primary reason being salary. In October, there was a two-week period where five SLPAs could not see students, leaving 196 students unserviced due to the resignation of their SLP supervisors. Because salaries are low and we can't fill positions, the district pays outside contracted employees, friends, and family $65, $85, $110 an hour, rates two to three times that of district employees doing the same work. Approximately 40% of special educators in our classrooms today are not fully licensed. As a parent, I would not be okay with my child being one of the over 1,200 students who are not getting the required and deserved special education services from licensed sped teachers. Today, I counted over 170 students who will not receive their related services this week due to shortages. There are 30 open special education positions for speech and 2OT. We are not meeting the needs of our students. Shortages are exacerbating gaps, hindering progress, and in some cases, causing harm, disproportionately impacting our most vulnerable. I know recruiting and retaining can be challenging, but the needs of our students are critical and urgent. We must take the opportunity in front of us right now to directly target our recruitment and retention crisis. Without change, our students bear the heartbreaking consequences. Offer competitive salaries and benefits in line with similar districts. The National Coalition on Personnel Shortages in Special Education and Related Services has helped 11 states pass salary supplement legislation for SLPs, and hundreds of districts across 32 states have achieved salary bonuses for school-based SLPs. To attract special educators and related service providers, 39 states have sanctioned the use of monetary incentives. Encourage and support work-life balance. Create a positive and supportive work environment that fosters a culture of collaboration and open communication. Educators come and stay when they feel their creativity and professional judgment are respected, supported, compensated, and valued.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Sebastian Sanders, Flint Street, Fall River. Mr. Dragia?
The speaker raised a valid question, I think, so I'd like to get a response from the superintendent related to the speech pathologist issue. And I'd also like to know if there is anything that was proposed by the speech pathologist specifically related to what the young lady was just saying in negotiations. Somebody, please give a response.
Well, it's gonna come out of the 30 minutes. Let's let the people talk, and we'll talk at the end.
Soon as, after the 30 minutes, please. Thank you.
So we owe you a couple of minutes there, guys. Next up is Sebastian Sanders, Flint Street, Fall River. Three minutes, please, Sebastian.
You bet. Hello. Hi, my name's Sebastian. I teach behavioral sub-separate for both 6th and 7th grade, English and Social Studies at Talbot Middle School. Yes, that is my real title, and yes, this is my first year in the district. For those on the stage that I haven't gotten to meet, you'd not know that I'm in Fall River by means of an agency that is specifically meant to put teachers in districts like Fall River. Districts that cannot keep teachers. Districts that because of their high turnover, they see less-than-favorable reading assessment scores. Why Fall River has high turnover, your guess is as good as mine. But I think I have a pretty good idea. I'm here to tell the school committee that last week, I put in my two weeks at Talbot, and I've decided to leave the district, following suit of dozens of other Fall River educators this year alone, especially special educators. I want to reassure you that I'm not leaving because my job is hard. I love my job so much. I love my kids. I love the same sub-separate kids locked in their own hallways that you're all too afraid to look at. These kids desperately want to learn, but you won't let them. I'm not leaving because of my coworkers. I love Talbot, man. I love every blue shirt in this room because they're all taking time out of their night away from their family and friends, begging for what feels like drops in the bucket that we have. Right? Anyways, I'm leaving because of our contract. I sincerely would love to stay, I'm serious, but I cannot, as a self-respecting educator, wake up in the morning and continue working for a district that respects me so little that they cannot accept a significantly decreased package on FREA's part. A district that respects me so little that they would rather wear me down, quote, than pay me a fair, competitive salary as I work for months without a contract. District that respects me so little that they see a school like mine, like Talbot, cannot fill a single inclusion role, and nothing is done. If you're not following, that means not a single student with an IEP in Talbot is getting their inclusion hours from a special educator. Not one. This means, sorry, this means that there are hundreds, over 100 kids that are not receiving their legally guaranteed rights to an appropriate education. But I'm told that maybe it's my lesson plans that are the problem. My job is to teach, plain and simple. Your job is to retain teachers and increase student outcomes. So veteran teachers are leaving and new teachers will not stay. What is your plan? Mayor Coogan, and at least one of you, I hope, after you've heard at least two people are quitting today, that you come to the next bargaining meeting on the 16th and make your best effort to see that we are bargaining in good faith, excuse me. But soon, the school committee, parents of Fall River, will start becoming wiser to the fact that their students are not getting a single service on their IEP. And this will fall at your feet. I sincerely hope that those parents are kinder to you than you have been to me.
Thank you. Three minutes, thank you. Next up, Corey Anderson, Robeson Street. Three minutes, please, Corey.
I've been a teacher in Fall River for nearly 10 years. I took a pay cut leaving New Bedford to teach in Fall River. But at that time, I thought it's closer to home where my kids go to school, and it was an opportunity at my alma mater, you know, class of 2000, and I'd be an active member in my own community. In 2019, I gave birth, at which point I was disappointed to see that our district didn't have any supports in place for maternity leave. Being broke with three children, I was forced to return to work prior to the recommended 12 weeks leave because we were unable to make ends meet. In 2022, I had another child and was excited to see that the laws had passed for paid parental leave and was saddened to hear that it didn't apply to municipal employees. So again, no paid leave. I was forced to use all of my days and my credit cards to support us. Now with inflation still on the rise, huge interest charges on my credit cards, and the pathetic pay increases we've received in comparison to our neighboring districts, we continue to barely get by. The past school year, our home needed a new roof, my daughter started college, our washing machine broke. My car was hit in the work parking lot, costing us another $500 in unplanned expenses. I tutor daily after school until 5:00. I gave up all of my planning periods to cover classes. I cover IEPs, and I mentor, and we're still just getting by. I had perfect attendance last year and collected on the $400 stipend. Huge. Didn't cover the cost of the deductible. At one of our bargaining sessions, someone said, "No one is better off now than they were a few years ago." You might be right there, but the teachers of Fall River have suffered with insufficient pay, dangerous working conditions, high caseloads, class sizes, and much, much more. We're drowning here, and we have been for far too long. I have a master's degree. Why am I working so many extra hours to make the equivalent of my brothers and sisters in neighboring districts? We are due for a pay correction. For too many years, we have, and too many contracts, we have accepted the leftover scraps offered to us with empty promises of more money in the future. The future is now. Please show up at our bargaining session this coming week. FRPS, show up. Oh, fun fact. Currently, our teachers are starting at $48,000 a year, and I found a job posting for an assistant manager at Chick-fil-A starting at $65,000 a year. No master's degree, no bachelor's degree, no MTL required.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to the request from the previous two speakers. I'd like to make a motion that we add all seven school committee members to the collective bargaining team.
All you're doing is taking time off. Do it at the end of the public.
I could not hear you, Mr. Chair.
Can you do it at the end of public input so we can let them have their time?
Sure.
Okay. Next up, Lauren Hogan, Ada Street, Fall River.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Hogan, and I'm a 3rd-grade teacher at Viveras. I've been an educator for nine years, eight of which have been with Fall River Public Schools. My main reason for speaking tonight is because of teacher retention. As I was taking my students out to recess the first full week of school this year, one of my 3rd graders turned to me and said, "Mrs. Hogan, please don't leave the school." Why would an eight-year-old child, who has known me for mere days, be worried about something like this? This child then explained that her kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade teacher have all left since she started at Viveras. The saddest part is, I too have been contemplating leaving for several years now. It is because of my students that I stay. Because the students of Fall River deserve consistency. Because they deserve to feel a sense of community, and that is extremely difficult to do with teacher and staff turnover at the alarming rate that we see in Fall River. I want my students to be able to return to Viveras throughout middle school and high school and know that they're going to be able to see their former elementary school teachers. I want our students to feel worthy, feel valued, and feel loved enough that we stay. Every year, I stay because I cannot be another person that deserts them and leaves them wondering if they are the reason their teachers leave each year. However, at some point, I may need to put myself and my family first, as many incredible veteran teachers have chosen to do and continue to do. In eight years of Viveras, I have had seven different neighbors in the classroom adjacent to me. Seven. Every year in the district, grade level and content teams are starting over with new colleagues, helping them learn our curriculums, expectations, and routines. Not to mention that the district decides to throw a new curriculum or initiative every couple of years for us to grapple with and figure out how to effectively implement. It is exhausting to have to rebuild year after year after year. And how are veteran teachers shown value for this work? The simple answer is, we really aren't. At last month's school committee meeting, Attorney Assad chose to partially quote FRE President Keith Michon. Then, the day before Thanksgiving, FRPS Facebook page shared an infographic with the same misinformation. I teach my students to be critical consumers of media and text. Your choice to include a partial quote is misleading and biased. It has repeatedly been advertised that the Fall River School Committee's salary proposal is the best cost-of-living adjustment in the state. But just because the percentage is high doesn't mean it helps us to close the gap. Let's look at Brockton. This academic year, a teacher with a master's degree on Step 12 in Brockton will make $103,130. With your current offer, a follower of a teacher with the same credentials would make $90,878. Great, we have closed the gap from nearly $20,000 to a little over $12,000. By the time the 26th to 27th school year comes around, that same teacher will now be making $101,000, $101,000, $101,192, meaning they will still be $3,000 shy of a Brockton public school teacher. If Brockton were to give a 0% cost-of-living adjustment over the next three years, Brockton is currently bargaining for a new contract as well, and I can't see them settling for 0% over three years. Your current financial offer may close the gap some, but it is not enough to make us competitive to nearby districts. You claim that the school committee is committed to engaging in constructive dialogue, yet you are not partaking in constructive dialogue. Knows and holds are not constructive dialogue. Progressive bargaining is not constructive dialogue. If you want to commit to constructive dialogue, then Mayor Coogan and at least one member of the school committee needs to be willing to show up at the table and actually participate. be willing to show up at the table and actually participate in bargaining sessions and settle this contract, or you'll continue to lose valuable educators that our students so greatly deserve. Thank you.
We're gonna run out of time, but we're gonna carry the names over. I would like a couple more. Josh Lopater, Deval Street, Fall River.
If it hasn't become apparent by now, we are currently having a bit of a morale crisis in the Fall River Public Schools. It definitely doesn't help matters when the week before Thanksgiving, we get hit with really a double whammy. Putting lesson plan language back on the bargaining table after it had already been withdrawn, that felt like a slap in the face. I was there. And this is my first contract cycle being involved in the bargaining. One of the things that I've learned in this process is that regressive bargaining is a no-no. You know, if we say, we're gonna take something off the table, we can't just put it back on the table. That was very disappointing. The double whammy really hit the very next day when I'm leaving the pep rally at Durfee, still got my school spirit, going to spend the holiday with my family, and then I see a Facebook post that just kinda twists the knife in. And then we look at teachers who are leaving in droves. Is this, is this what we want? Because that's what's happening here. And it seems that there's a lot of miscommunication going on between your bargaining team at the table and what you guys are saying up here. On Monday after Thanksgiving break, you posted another post on Facebook trying to clarify, no, we didn't reject the package that the FREA proposed. I was in the room. Your team did say that, and they said it with a condescending tone of, it was ridiculous to propose a package as one whole thing. Fifty of us were there. We heard it, right? But these are the kinds of miscommunications that happen when you're not there, because how do you know what was actually said? It's a private meeting. You're relying on other people to bring the word back to you. So that's why we're really insisting on that, that at least a few of you guys come to our next bargaining session. You guys have been making it pretty clear you want to go to mediation. I don't know if you guys played the game of telephone before, but I don't think adding an extra person really makes things happen fast. If anything, it just seems like a way of trying to, as has been said before, just drag the process out. And we're past that point, right? Not only us FREA members, but also every other employee you have in this district that isn't gonna get their contract settled until you guys settle with the FREA. Our security guards, our administrators, paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, custodians, I'm sure I'm missing a few, they deserve fair contracts too. And I just hope that when it's their turn to get a contract, you guys treat them a whole lot better than we've been treated. Thank you.
Yeah, I think so. Actually, could do two. We can do two more if they stay to three minutes. Andrea Ross, Keely Street, Fall River.
Good evening. Although I am a Fall River resident, I'm actually here to speak to you first as a teacher in a smaller neighboring district where I work with numerous qualified, fantastic, former Fall River teachers. One of them commented to me recently that she is now making more money than she would be in Fall River with better working conditions and less stress. I share this comment with permission, and many others have expressed similar sentiments. Instead of being a place where rookie teachers get a position on their resume and move on as soon as they have the opportunity, I urge you to offer competitive compensation as well as respond to the union's requests that will not cost you a dime so that Fall River can be a desirable place for teachers to spend their careers. There are teachers who have spent their entire careers here, and they also deserve to be adequately compensated for that. This will be better for the students of Fall River. As a Fall River parent and foster parent, I have had the privilege of dealing with compassionate, competent educators at Laterno, Spencer-Borden, Henry Lord, Talbot, and Durfee. These people are amazing, and they deserve the fair contract that they are asking you for. Many of them are doing a job that I'm not sure if I could do. Students are coming to school with more than just educational needs, and teachers are having to wear multiple hats to meet those needs. If the negotiating team does not retain quality educators by offering a fair contract that is competitive with other districts, it is the students of Fall River who will suffer. If you look at the open positions, they, you can see that they already are. You were elected by the taxpayers of Fall River not to create new administrative positions and give raises to administrators, but to fully staff Fall River classrooms by offering competitive wages and respect to the people working on the front lines with our children. This brings me to the final role in which I am addressing you, which is as a Fall River voter. The only way that I would consider voting for any of you in the next school committee election is if you do what is best for the students of Fall River by attending bargaining sessions and resolving this contract fairly and as soon as possible. Thank you.
Next up, Keith Michon, Tryon Avenue, East Province. Last, last speaker.
Good evening. I'm Keith Michon, president of the Fall River Educators Association. As everyone knows, we're well past due for a new contract. Frustrations are growing, as you've heard tonight, and it's having a negative impact. I could talk about how my words have been misrepresented, or how recent bargaining sessions have gone, but I'd like to talk about where we're going from here. Tonight, we will begin to discuss bargaining budget priorities. I'm happy to see themes consistent with what we have been fighting for in our contract. Settling contracts is an important part of the budget process, and I implore you to make a serious effort to settle all contracts before the new year. I'm pleased to see that increase, increasing staff compensation and benefits among priorities, core reimbursement, robust support systems, and many other things that could make Fall River a desirable place to be an educator, which it certainly has great potential to be. I've experienced it right down the hall of this building. One of the students I met while working at Cuss Middle School was two thousand twenty-three senior class president, Rachel Lemma. I'd like to remind you all of the essays she read at the youth candidate event in two thousand twenty-three. She spoke about how teacher shortage impacted her education and called for teacher appreciation, fair wages, and respect. This is what we've been advocating for in our contract campaign. Our students notice the impact of these things. Not only do they notice when they don't have a certified teacher, but they are also establishing a perception of the profession. Our greatest pool of talented future Fall River educators attends our schools each day. It's time to settle this contract and show that, them that education is a great field to work in. Fall River is a great city to work in. Status quo won't prove those last two statements true. Let's keep doing the work that we've been doing, keep moving in the right direction. This is a transformational time. We ask that the mayor and at least one other member of the committee attend the next bargaining session. We ask that you seriously consider our recent package, and we look forward to bargaining sessions with all of our units. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the half hour. Appreciate you, everybody, for being respectful to each other.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dias has a motion, but I have a question for Mr. Assad that's related to your motion. If everybody goes, that's a meeting, isn't it? To negotiations.
Yes.
All right, so I, I will, I, I will offer to go with the vice chairman.
I didn't hear your question. I didn't hear your question.
If everybody goes, it's, it's a quorum, isn't it?
That's correct.
All right, so we'll, myself and the vice chairman will go to the next meeting, okay, guys? We'll definitely attend.
Let's have a question, second.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. This, two questions. One with the thirty-minute period. Is there anyone that hasn't?
A letter, a letter came in, but we're, we're not, go ahead.
If it's just, if it's, I know we discussed at the last meeting, the thirty-minute rule, but if there was just like one or two strikers, we could make a motion to waive the rules. If it's just one letter, I don't see the issue with reading it right now. So I'll make a motion to waive the thirty-minute rule to allow the remaining citizens' inputs to be read out loud.
I have a motion. I don't have a second. Okay.
And this woman, other point.
Go ahead.
I just, individual, like a few individuals mentioned about the Thanksgiving Day posts. I'm not gonna get into it specific, but I just wanna know, because I asked myself, who posted that post on Facebook?
We're not, we're not chasing Facebook here, Ali. That what we're doing tonight?
I asked the question.
Are we chasing Facebook? Mr. Dias, you've never heard of those fake profiles and things? We're not chasing Facebook up here. We have to take care of some kids.
Know who posted it. Okay.
I agree.
Answer my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Glad, Mr. Mr. Agia.
Just, it's getting hard to hear, just so you know. When you guys were talking, we cannot hear and understand what you're saying. But my question is the same as it was when the young ladies came up for speech therapy. So I think it's important, when we're in, somebody brings up a, a valid issue, I think they made a valid issue, but we don't just sit by and just say, that's okay, I would assume. So my question is to anybody on the bargaining team, has there been a specific proposal by the speech therapist to get a special, whatever they call it, additional compensation? They quoted thirty-nine other cities or states that they're like, what's the status of the speech therapy issue?
So as part of Unit A, where the speech language pathologists are, there are proposals on the table for, around caseload sizes and around stipends for SLPs as well as SLP lead.
And what is it that they're looking for, so?
I believe the SLP lead was a four thousand dollar stipend, SLP is a two thousand dollar stipend, and then depending, and then I, I don't remember exactly what the caseload cap was, that was proposed.
So when, when I hear the, what they're talking about, it, to me, we're only hearing half of the story. The public's only hearing half of the story. Some things we hear that we don't even know about, not that we're not communicating, but we communicate once a month, so it's a difficult process to go back and forth. But when I hear those young ladies say that they, we can't find speech therapists, it's a very high-need situation, children are not getting the services, you know, is what they're saying. Now, I believe we're trying to supplement it with vendors and the like, and people would be owed compensatory services. So I think Ms. Obenchain is doing the best she can to do that. But I don't find that to be unreasonable if that was what was gonna help, be a four thousand dollar stipend. The young man who just came up who said he was leaving, that said he was a substantially separate classroom. I, for one, have been a proponent of that, to say, we have substantially separate, highest-needs classes in the district. We need to do something different than that because those are the highest-needs, most needy children. So I have been one that's been pushing for a stipend specifically for them. The committee has, has agreed with those recommendations to try to do that. But I think it's disingenuous for anyone to come up before this committee in the public and say that we don't care about those certain positions, and I'm only bringing up those two because they were here today. But I, for one, and this committee, has supported increases for those specifically targeted areas. Now, we don't agree on everything, but to say that we're not trying, that we're not giving every single dollar that we can have to fund these teacher contracts is disingenuous. It's disingenuous by anybody that comes up and say that we don't care, but we cannot get blood from a stone. We have a limited amount of money in negotiations. But I really feel like the school committee is unfairly being looked at like as if we don't care. The gentleman was excellent, who, that first speaker, talked about, he doesn't know both sides of the story, but he would hope that we're being conscientious. I, for one, think that we are. But we cannot give something that we don't have. We can only afford so much, and I think that's the part that I think is, is missing. We hired a whole slew of people based on the, getting money from the Student Opportunity Act. We hired a lot of positions that are needed in order to service these kids. We can't just turn around and lay all those people off now. So there's only a finite amount of money, and I think that we're actually funding, that, you know, we're doing the best that we can. But I, for one, want to publicly state that I support the special speech therapists that have more money. I've supported the substantially separate classrooms, and I think most of the members of the committee, or if not, all of the members have. So I just find it disingenuous. So I always like to ask, what is the rebuttal? What is the rebuttal as a group that our bargaining team, here's the bully pulpit, say what you have to say. I would like to get somebody to respond to some of the things. Lastly, I'm sick and tired of people coming up before us to say that at Durfee High School, there's hundreds of kids in that cafeteria. That's unacceptable. It shouldn't be happening. And if it is, I've been asking, oh, it's not, it's this, it's that. That has to stop, in my opinion, our yields.
Thank you. We'll, we'll find out about that on Monday. Thank you. Subcommittee updates, please. Facilities and operations. Mimi Larve, the chair.
Yep. Facility and operations Subcommittee met this past, last Wednesday, December fourth, at the administration building, four thirty. There were three items on the agenda that were referred to the full committee tonight, and one item up for discussion. Mr. Pacheco presented the envelope HVAC request for qualification to provide engineering services related to a study. The winning bidder will be responsible for evaluations and recommendations for each facility regarding HVAC equipment and operations. They will be mapping out a long-term projection capital plan and highlight individual projects by necessity. This work would be proactive and priority-driven with a continuous preventative maintenance plan. Committee agreed, Mr. Pacheco should be the point person for this work. The conversation was had on who has the fiscal responsibility of this project. Committee felt it's the city's responsibility, and the full committee should discuss further. There should be a green, there could be a green roof grant available through MSPA. Mr. Pacheco also presented the transportation invitation for bid for yellow bus services, for typical transportation and the McKinney-Vento transportation. My, Mr. Pacheco stated, not much has changed from the last five-year contract. We discussed how the buses never run out of seats, but run out of time. The bus routes will be revisited by district and bus company. Electric buses will be in operation in the next couple of months. We discussed the fiscal aspect and how the city's responsibility to pay busing, not the school side. We had a discussion about reaching out to Argosy and inquiring about their start and end times. Mr. Pacheco also presented on the renewal request from the Tremblies Van Transportation to provide Special Education Seventy Van Transportation for both district and other district students. This would be a three-year contract beginning FY twenty-five, twenty-six, with a two-year, one-year renewal contract options. The van monitors will have an increase in their hourly wage of approximately two dollars a year after FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Daily charges will remain the same for FY twenty-five and twenty-six. FY twenty-six and twenty-seven will increase five percent, as well as FY twenty-seven and twenty-eight will have a five percent increase with this contract. McKinney-Vento will have a separate bid. The district's director of transportation will be using a traverse system. The van runs are constantly changing for numerous reasons, and traverse is used for efficiency. Final discussion was the Pace Building, the renovation and restoration of it. The original estimate for this job was thirty-three million, nine hundred thousand dollars, not to, and not expected to be forty-four million, five hundred. Mr. Pacheco stated the job is one month behind. The inside work has been going well. The roof was littered with piping, but almost all of it's off the roof now. Fire suppression bid will be the next big piece of this project. The bidding is underway. Mr. Pacheco stated Pace Center has been halted because of the playground costs. The work intensified, and the costs were higher than estimated for all four playgrounds. Mr. Agia stresses displeasure with the amount of time it's taken for this Pace Building project to be completed. Mr. Pacheco spoke to representatives from both rental sites, Bishop Connolly and Three Hundred Northeastern Ave, to discuss rentals for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Meeting was adjourned at six.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Agia.
Just to reiterate some of the points that Vice Chair Larve talked about. The issue that we brought up at this facilities meeting was about the Pace Center, the actual building. But for context, the issue that we have is, last February, March, we had a debate in this committee, in the public, over how we were gonna improve the pre-K spots, early education for our children. We were told, we were promised, it was agreed to, that several things were gonna happen, so that when we passed the lease, we were gonna do it for one year. Because when we pay a lease, we Because when we pay a lease, we are just basically giving away money. So at this meeting was the first time that this school committee received any word that we were $700,000 over budget on four playgrounds. That, to me, is a problem, and it continues to be a problem. Systematically, we talked about things with the superintendent, about how does this happen? I still don't have an answer to that. We have a meeting coming up on Wednesday with this topic being on the agenda. When we look at the Pace Building, we were promised in February, March of last year, I'm still awaiting the copies of the minutes, which I'm sure I'll get, you can go home and watch it yourself if you'd like. We were promised that we were going to get a new roof at the auditorium at the old Durfee High School, including fire suppression. The building inspector had told us already, we cannot do any work until the fire suppression, the roof, and I think a new generator and all emergency stuff needs to work. We received none of that. I've been asking for updates on this for over the last six months. Mr. Pacheco gave us an update at the Facility Subcommittee, said that the roof was 95% done or whatever. So I figured, oh, that sounds good. But the kicker was that the fire suppression system isn't even out to bid yet, and we're in December. And we were promised that this was going to be done so that we would have the time to work on the facility so we could improve and not have to pay leases at the other two sites. The reason why I'm saying this is because everyone should be aware of it, and people need to stop being held accountable. When we say something, they need to give the answer, and we need to do it. Because what now we hear, oh, we don't have the money. So we owe $700,000 on playgrounds. So the priority was playgrounds, I guess, instead of any other expenses. And money is not going to get better. It's going to get worse moving forward. And I think that it's incumbent upon this committee and the public to weigh in. The building meeting is going, the special ed, early ed meeting is going to be at the Pace Center on Wednesday. Anybody can come, and it's the intention of the chair, which is me, to do a tour of the area so we can see what is planned. I don't believe that we should just abandon this project and say, let's kick it to 2026. And I also want the superintendent, which I've already requested, and given her some time to get the answers. We need to figure out how this happened and where was the money in the budget. Because now we're short $700,000 that we thought we had to pay for the Pace, which was only going to cost 3.9. Do the numbers, folks. This is a problem. So it was very disappointing at the meeting to get this information. The other piece, and I'm not sure if the superintendent has added any data to this package or any one pages, but the two issues were, we're going to go out to look at bids for how to fix all the systems. I'm not sure if we got an answer to who's going to pay for that. Is there anything in here that says that? Or is that preempting the discussion?
Do you mean about the Collins Center? I'm confused about what question you asked.
So what happened is, the committee debated at the meeting to say whether we wanted to go out to get a study, to talk about the HVAC systems. It's going to come in at 40, $50 million to get them all up to snuff like it should be. My concern is, who is going to pay that bill? At the Subcommittee, we talked about the process of the city is supposed to pick up anything $150,000 or more. So here we are. I'm asking you if that was rectified, and do we have a letter saying who's going to pay when it comes time for that discussion today?
No, we do not.
We don't. The other piece was with the transportation. The transportation bids are something that is a city expense, but I think it's a fiduciary responsibility to do it the best way we can. That we need to upgrade some of the way that the routes are run, and so the lines are drawn. And I would hope that there's something in place for that, and I know that's a topic on Wednesday for our meeting as well. But I don't think it should be glossed over. We overspent the budget by $700,000 on playgrounds. Whether it was legitimate reasons or not, we overspent by $700,000. And now, because the fire suppression system is not in, we can't do the Pace Center, we can't do the pre-K build-out that this committee was promised. That might be okay for some members. I can tell you, for this one, it's not. With that, I yield.
I do want to make something clear. We are, I talked to Al Olivera today about the fire suppression. We're very close to sending that out, and I believe the money will be committed for the most, one of the most expensive pieces, the pump, by the end of December. And we will have, we still have the ARPA money that we're going to use to do the fire suppression. That's covered. Going forward on the Pace, I would say as soon as we can get that wing of the building with fire suppression, we get some bids out to see what this is going to cost and go forward from there. I know the estimates that are floating around may have included removing asbestos flooring, but that's been tested and there's no asbestos in it. So that'll save us $200,000, which is important to a project like this. And again, working with our partners by renting spots that we've done for many years will be able to accommodate the kids. And hopefully, I'm with Mr. Aguirre, get them into the Pace Center as fast as possible. Okay. I have a number of minutes that need approval.
Superintendent's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped... Okay. Superintendent's report.
So as part of the report tonight, I have a hiring update, the holiday event update, and also a Collins Center update. The first is hiring. We've, since our last meeting, we've hired 20 people. One clerk, two computer techs, one custodian part-time, one provisional junior custodian, one nurse, eight paraprofessionals, one SAC, one security officer, three teachers, and one utility worker part-time. In that same timeframe, we've had 14 resignations, one retirement, and four transfers within the district. I wanted to give an update on the holiday events that I spoke to the last time we were here. The first is that the Winter Wonderland Holiday Wish fundraiser was held back on November 22nd, and the fundraiser raised nearly $13,000 that will be used to purchase gifts for students in need this holiday season. All of our schools were represented at the event. There were tables, and some schools had more than one table. And so I just want to thank all of the people who did show up, school leaders, administrators, teachers, many other staff members. Because it's not a Fall River Public Schools event, per se, but it is something that does raise a considerable amount of money for our kids, so just wanted to say thank you for that. This past Saturday was the holiday parade. I also referenced that back in November. That event was so well-attended, you know, across the city. There were so many people lining the streets. And again, we had every single one of our schools present and marching. So it was, you know, it was really exciting to see. We marched in the parade, some folks from Central Office. So we got to stop in and meet with schools prior to marching. And it was really exciting to see staff members and as well as students and their families present there, so. The last piece is the Collins Center review. Last year, Superintendent Ponce contracted with the Collins Center to do a review of Facilities and Operations as well as the Human Resources Department. This was a review that was supposed to take place, I believe, last spring, but we've postponed it a couple of times. It was going to be done late summer or early fall. But with my transition and the addition of a new direct, I'm sorry, Human Resources Director, we actually were looking to postpone it to mid-year. I have been in communication with the Collins Center, and that is something that's going to start in the early spring. And we should have a report from the Collins Center within the summer. I know there have been questions around a review versus an audit. What we contracted with the Collins Center to do is a review of processes, procedures, and we are expecting a report from them over the summer that will offer us some recommendations for next steps that we plan to build into the strategic plan moving forward.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
I'm on the Collins, two questions. One on the Collins Center with that contract. So we've never started any work with the organization yet. You want to push it, postpone it until mid-year?
We have done only planning meetings, and we've done some of the document review, but they have not been in the district to start the work of, you know, observing and interviewing people and things like that.
And if it's okay, I know we're having discussions recently on if school committee members can request information, but if it's, okay, I'd love to see a copy of the contract if it wasn't already provided. If it was, I can go back and look for it. But are you aware of any language exit clauses if we, the committee decide to go on another route?
I'm not aware of any clauses, and it's not my recommendation, or if anyone wanted my opinion, that we abandon the plan to have them come in to do the review. I think the needs that presented themselves remain, and that it would be a misstep if we didn't follow through with this review.
Thank you. And you mentioned an audit versus a review. I believe before my time on the committee, when we discussed, the committee, this committee discussed the reorganization of Facilities and Operations, it was with the caveat, there would be an audit, some sort of audit. What type, what kind of review is going to happen? Like, what would be the steps? Like, what are they going to review? Would be my question.
So they request things like, they're looking for any of the policies related to Facilities and Operations, any of the procedures that are in place that either we have, you know, committed to writing in terms of kind of formal procedures in the district, or where that doesn't exist, they're looking for us to commit it to writing in a way that they have an understanding of how we conduct business. So it has to do with the way the department is organized and the way the department is functioning, and they are going to give us feedback there. So that will happen for Human Resources as well as Facilities and Operations.
So they'll just be reviewing policies and procedures? They're not going to review like expenditures and things of that regard?
I don't believe so. It's not, it's not a finance audit.
So it's not, right. And obviously, we, so you're of the opinion that we shouldn't, separate from this review, there should be no audit of the department?
I'm not making a recommendation for an audit. I just know that the review will not contain and will not include an audit. So I think the Collins Center comes in, you know, as partners, similarly to what we just experienced with the Department of Ed having AIR come into the district to do a review in our schools, focus groups, interviews, observations, review of documents, and they do a comprehensive report of their findings against standards, and then they offer us some recommendations for next steps. And so that's what, that's the kind of report we're expecting from the Collins Center.
Thank you. And on the last point, and I wasn't even going to bring this up, but I was quite alarmed from the conversation we had the previous meeting. Are you aware of, or has anyone in the administration had any conversations about limiting school committee members' authority or ability to request information? Has there been any conversations on that at all?
No. I'm not, I'm not understanding. Related to this?
In general, has, within the last month, has yourself or anyone within the administration have had any conversations about limiting school committee members?
I mean, I'll speak for myself. I actually don't mind speaking for myself. I will tell you that I am overwhelmed with the number of emails I receive on a daily and weekly basis from members of the school committee. It is, it is too much. I'm going to say that out loud. It's too much for me personally. It's too much for what I'm asking my team to do. And so earlier this year, I had requested that people start using a form so that at least I had a mechanism for tracking what requests had been made, when they were made, put ourselves on a timeline, and no, I won't say nobody, but I've gotten very few responses in that form. Instead, it is like the Wild, Wild West, and I get emails day, night, weekends, whenever it moves people. And I'm telling you that it is overwhelming. I have expressed a need for some kind of guidance because I think it's important for me to understand what I am required to report out on and the timeline for that reporting. So if there have been discussions outside of that, where, I mean, I guess there have been because we heard about it at the last meeting, right? But I, I mean, I will speak only for myself.
Thank you. And if I could just say, in regards to the reporting mechanism, and I gave my opinion on that. I think it could have been better formatted. And I think simple conversations, the first, I'm hearing that you feel this way, and at least just speaking for myself. I think just simple conversations and finding out ways we can better communicate would have been a lot more appropriate. But on that point, because I am very worried that this could be set a very bad precedent for this entire city if we have some sort of opinion come down from the city trying to limit what we can receive for responses. It's an authoritarian way of governing. And so I'd like to ask, through the chair, or if the chair knows, or if anyone knows, what memorandum, do we have any memorandum with the Corporation Council of the City?
Yeah, I have it right here. And I had the Corporation Council review the rights and responsibilities of members of the school committee, and this is what he pulled out for that specific issue, because I did think it was going to come up tonight. "The authority to act on behalf of the school committee must be obtained by an official vote, taken during a legally convened meeting. Without this authority, requests made by the school committee members can be handled, as they can, by any other member of the public," meaning Freedom of Information Request. "The school department is not required to create documents or perform any analysis at the request of a committee member." Pursuant to Section 4.7 of the Charter, "The school committee is never authorized to give orders or directions to any employees of the school department, even with the approval of the entire school committee."
Mr. Mayor, is that, was that an opinion from the corporation, your Corporation Council, or is that policy of...
No, that's a legal opinion.
Opinion from Alan Rumsey. Okay. Well, in that one section, it does include, besides superintendent, I believe that might have been left out, delivery or not. But just to go to the question, because that's just one individual's opinion, that doesn't make it fact, doesn't make it true. Do we have any memorandum with the city of Fall River when it comes to legal counsel?
I just have my notes right here.
On a separate note, I'm just asking if we, do we have any memorandum with the city of Fall River?
I'll have them, if it's okay with Attorney Assad. Can I have the legal counsel, Rumsey, send one to all the members of the committee? Is that allowed, Mr.?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Right. That's my question is, do we have a memorandum, if we're not just for this, with, for anything? Can we go to the city for legal issues? I'm assuming there's some sort of memorandum of understanding. If I can ask Attorney Assad, is that accurate?
I think they work together.
There is a cooperation between the Corporation Counsel's office and the school committee attorney, and it has been that way for forever. I remember when I was Corporation Counsel back in the, in the 80s, we had the same relationship with the school committee attorney, and that has gone on to this day. Basically, there is an agreement whereby the Corporation Counsel handles all of the litigation within the school department, and any court action is automatically subsumed by their authority as part of the charter.
So there's no written agreement between the city of Fall River and Fall River Public Schools when it comes to legal counsel? I believe there was, but...
Yeah, I haven't, there may very well be, and it might be in the indirect authority of the, of the school department as well as the city of Fall River. There is a, there is an ordinance that definitely says that with respect to litigation, the Corporation Counsel is the authority to represent the city and its subdivisions in any action. And they also handle the workers' compensation matters.
I'll yield for now. I see my colleague has his hand up. I might have further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just to, just to follow up on that. So Attorney Assad, did the mayor or anybody on the school committee ask you for an opinion on what the role of the school committee is in asking questions of the superintendent?
Well, with respect to what I'm asked by the, either the mayor or any other member of the, of the school committee, there are certain things that are confidential. I'm asked, I'm asked on a continuous basis for legal opinions or for advice concerning school department matters. With respect, I've got a copy of the, the, looks like memorandum written by Mr. Rumsey that was handed to me just today by the mayor. I'm in agreement with his findings. This is, this is a situation where this is, this would be a law. And if it was requested of me to write an opinion, it would be consistent with what he is, what he has here. He has it in three different sections, but it is, it is, does comport and is consistent with the law.
I just think it's disingenuous, quite frankly, to not go to you as our school committee attorney. So there doesn't need to be an MOU. We pay you very well to represent us. And I think at the end of the day, when the mayor wants to get a decision that's not something that he can't control, he calls Mr. Rumsey and says, can you please write something? It's not the first time, not the second time, not the third time. This just continually happens. At the end of the day, the school committee members have a right to ask questions of the superintendent. Now, Mr. Dias asked a question to the superintendent, saying, did anyone in her administration... saying, did anyone in her administration call any other member of the committee or the city to complain about the questions that anyone's asking, I took it from her answer was, yeah, I think she did complain to the mayor, and when, in the last meeting, when I said that the mayor is just trying to protect the superintendent from answering questions, I'll say it again here, that's exactly, in this member's opinion, exactly what's happening.
The mind reader is at it again.
I don't think it is, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't think it is.
You can have the floor as soon as I'm done, I have no problem with it, I'm just making a statement.
Okay.
My statement is that that's what's happening, so, I've asked some things to the superintendent along this line, and I think it's quite valid, I've asked questions about illegal garages that nobody's addressing, I've asked questions of a whole slew of things that I think are important to ask, and I think it's valuable, just today, for instance, I looked at some signatures that we had on a document that said, we're gonna go out and we're going to authorize payment, two members of this committee signed off on these statements, we paid two hundred and fifty dollars, it looks like, because a company was called, because a, it looks like, uh, um, trash compactor wasn't running, two hundred and fifty dollars, it states from the person, arrived on site and found the compactor not working, check incoming, power, okay, found key switch in the off position, then, they turned the key switch to on, they tested it, and lo and behold, it worked.
Mr. Agia, what is this?
For two hundred and fifty, the purpose of this is relative to questions to the superintendent, and that's what's before us.
Mr. Agia, what does this have to do with anything?
What, if I have the floor, please.
I mean, but, you're talking about trash.
So, here's an example, we are having a discussion, because a committee member brought it up, related to whether the superintendent gets too many emails from the school committee, and I just wanted to point out, these are the type of things that I get elected by the people to do, and to ask some questions to say, does this make sense?
I know.
I actually just wrote in the email to the superintendent, H M M M with a bunch of dots, because to me, that was a question, I think that's our responsibility before we sign things, to ask her stuff, I have plenty of things that I've asked the superintendent for, and quite frankly, the superintendent has tried her best to review them, I don't believe that every single thing that's been asked, whether it be through the drive or an email, I don't believe that they actually have been responded to, another one this morning was from September twenty first, Mr. Dias sent an email to the superintendent asking for the forensics of when somebody signs a bill schedule, how many minutes it was until they actually signed it, did they actually look at the document, we haven't gotten a response to that since September twenty first, so, this morning, I sent a follow-up that said, if I missed it, please resend it, but, please let me know, to me, those are legitimate reasons to ask the superintendent questions, I don't think there's any ill will at all, and, part of the job is, you're gonna get some questions asked of you, and I think we need to be able to do that, relative to the Collins Center review, the issue that I have with that is, we were promised an audit, I've said this before, I talked to the superintendent on the phone today, I think we can probably do some of the same, but, we as a school committee never voted on the Collins Center review or the scope of work, so, all I would ask is, before they come in, that we get a copy of what the scope of the work is, so that we can try and see if there is some of the things that can happen, which I had in a collaborative conversation with the superintendent today, to see if we can make this Collins Center review more robust, and since it's not happening until the spring, I think we have plenty of time to look at it, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, uh, thanks, what was it, lightning, approval of minutes, number seven, we're gonna put a hold on seven one, and I'm gonna ask for the group to approve, um, the minutes of the subcommittee evaluation, subcommittee meeting from eleven five, seven two, seven three, the approval of the minutes from the grievance subcommittee on eleven eighteen, and the approval of the minutes from the regular school committee meeting on eleven eighteen.
So, moved?
Can I get a motion, a second, I got a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Can I get a second first?
Second.
Mr. Dias.
Um, going through board docs before the meeting, um, I did not see seven dash four in there, um, so, I'm not going to vote to approve seven dash four, I didn't see seven dash one either, so, I understand why we're holding that.
Okay, hold on, she's checking right now.
I almost, I almost, I was mistaken, I didn't opt for that, but they're done.
They're, they're all done, uh, they just weren't uploaded, I guess, seven four, the others are, though, Mr. Dias?
Yes, um, and, and it's, that's perfectly fine, but, I just think it would be appropriate that we tabled seven one and seven four.
We'll hold seven four two then, okay, so, seven two, seven three, and there's a hold on seven one and seven four, I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia.
On seven one, is it that they're not done, or was there some, I'm just trying to figure out if we're in compliance, are we still in compliance if we hold off till January?
It's from, um, ten twenty one, yep.
Are we still in compliance if we don't pass those minutes, uh, approve those minutes until January?
I believe we are.
Thank you.
So, seven two and seven three, I have a motion, a second, Deb, can you call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes?
Mr. Bailey, Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, item number eight, we have a travel request.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve, but, have a second?
I'll second it with a question.
Mr. Corey?
So, I just wanted to know a little bit about the, um, on this Babson trip, um, what caught my attention was the Bar Foundation, uh, what's our status with the Bar Foundation now in regards to RPA, is there still something going on that had been started a few years ago when Dr. Malone was our superintendent?
I believe our relationship with the Bar Foundation exists with, um, with Evolve that's at Durfee now, so, when Evolve was at RPA?
Okay.
It was, I think, we entered into it in terms of reimagining high schools kind of thing through RPA, the Evolve program was developed, and that program moved to Durfee, and so, our relationship with the Bar Foundation moved with it.
I know, Mr. Pavor was at RPA when, when it first started, so, I was just wondering, and I was just curious as to where the Bar Foundation is right now with our school district, are they still helping us, are they, are they giving us money, they still act as consultants?
They are still, um, funding partially the, um, the Evolve program at Durfee.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion and a second, uh, Deb, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, um, item nine, acceptance of donations, uh, we have a number of donations tonight, can I get a motion, a second, before the superintendent reads them?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, uh, Deb, call the roll.
Question.
Or, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I see, uh, I had mentioned this at the two meetings ago, so, most of these things are small, like, little donations here and there, but, the first one, on behalf of the Parent and Community Engagement Center, I think is a bigger, uh, issue for us, and I'd like to see if the superintendent can give us a presentation, at least some kind of information on it, when I look at this, I typed in twenty thirteen Freight Line or X Line Motorhome, and the donation on the internet, and it came out that it's worth ninety thousand dollars, so, I think that's where they have a little more info for the committee, for the public, to see what this actually is, and I'm asking that you, either you or somebody present something.
Sure, yeah, I'd love to have our director from the Parent and Community Engagement Center, Cynthia Kudo, come down, so she can talk a little bit about, um, how it was we were able to secure this donation and what the plans are.
Thank you.
Thank you, as most of you know, um, the Parent Center does Parent Pace on the Go, where we go out into the community and do a variety of what we do at the center, including registration, uh, for kindergarten, um, helping families apply for SNAP and mass health, um, and a variety of other things that we do, so, about a year ago, my admin assistant, Dawn Monas, in our meeting, our weekly meeting, said to me, I wish we could just get a van, uh, to do this out into the community, instead of just setting up tables and tents and all that, and, you know, initially, I laughed about it, but, that always stayed in our minds, so, we, um, continued to look for grants, um, none were big enough to cover this, and about a couple of months ago, uh, we found a potential grant that we weren't gonna, we ended up not being able to apply for it, but, in doing the homework for that, we called South Coast Health, um, just to get some information on their health van, um, and my contact there connected me with other people, they were selling theirs, um, and then in further conversation, they agreed to just donate it to us, so, that's how we were able to accept this donation.
Can you just tell us what it, like, is, you have any thoughts on what to do with it?
Yes, so, it's, it's actually a large RV, and there's three meeting spaces, um, there's a bathroom in it, and there's a waiting area, right now, it's equipped for medical, um, rooms where they can, um, have, um, physicals, vaccines, all that, uh, we plan on keeping two of those, because the hope is, maybe at some point, we can bring our vaccine clinic on the go as well, uh, but, they also can be used for meeting spaces, so, uh, we're gonna keep those as meeting spaces, sorry, we're keeping those for meeting spaces for families, um, the hope is that we'll take our vaccine clinic at some point on the go, and maybe offer some other services, um, in partnership with our community partners, um, maybe wholesome community partners, as we go into the communities with this RV in the future, I think the sky's the limit at this point, uh, what we can do with the van, but, the, the focus is bringing us into the community, um, to service our families and students.
Mr. Agia, any further?
Just, you know, I'd like to say is thank you, I think we get a lot of donations, this is one of the larger ones that I've ever been part of, and I want to thank, uh, Ms. Monas as well as your assistant, I think she had a lot to do with this, so, I think you guys do a great job of promoting the community, and I, um, I'm looking forward to it, and I think it's not gonna be a cost to us, you have money to, and grants to fund any of the repairs and the like, so, this is what we call a win-win in my book, so, thank you.
Yeah, it'll be fully funded by grants as far as the running costs, so, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Corey?
No, I'm just really excited about the, uh, the opportunity to have something like this, and when, when you say it's on the go, that means we can probably really reach out and service so many more kids and families with the services that your center performs, and so, hopefully, that reflects directly in better attendance for our schools, uh, more important, uh, raising the value levels of the people that you're reaching out to, uh, especially in that very difficult demographic that I know you guys are working super hard with, and, uh, hopefully, down the road, all of this contributes to better scores for our children, so, it's, it's just a win-win, and the idea of on the go and going out to service different, you know, locations throughout the city, their homes, different clinics and collaboration, just think you guys will develop a really good game plan, what I would like is maybe like next year, if you can just give us an overview as to just how, how it's working, and, and seeing what sense of direction something like this might go into, because it's very exciting, I just want to congratulate your center for having something like this, it's a really good PR thing for the Fall River Public Schools, I yield.
Thank you.
Ms. Larrabee?
I, just quickly, I just want to comment on, uh, Mr. Corey, what he just said, I would love to get the numbers, like, maybe, uh, getting it of next year, whatever, six months, seven months, I would love to have some, some outcomes, some data, just to see what you guys are doing with it, that'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you, thanks, Sin, um, so, now, can I get a motion, a second, to accept, I already have a motion, a second, okay, so, why don't we vote, and then we'll have, uh, Dr. Curly explain them?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
So, on behalf of Durfee High School Athletics Director Brad, Brad Bustin, the acceptance of three thousand, ten dollars, five cents for the Durfee football team, a donation from the Hilltopper Gridiron Club, it's a donation to purchase sweatshirts and sweatpants for the program, on behalf, also on behalf of Durfee High School Athletics Director Brad Bustin, the acceptance of two thousand, six hundred, eighty-two dollars, a donation for the girls' soccer team from the Booster Enterprises Incorporated, um, the donation will be used to purchase Under Armour jackets and pants, on behalf of the Henry Lord Community School Principal Shama Daniels, the acceptance of a seventy-five inch touch view interactive display screen, a donation valued at twenty-five hundred dollars, um, from Akers Technologies, it's a donation that will be used, um, as needed in the school, on behalf of, um, Durfee Athletics Director Brad Bustin, again, um, the acceptance of one thousand, twenty-six dollars, fifty-five cents for the boys' soccer team, which is a donation from various donors to SNAP Mobile, um, this is a donation to purchase Under Armour jackets, and then we have various donations made to schools, um, all over the city over the holiday season for Thanksgiving and, um, and actually Christmas, and so, I'm going to try to summarize some of these, um, Green Elementary School Principal Liz Dunn, um, accepts us a seven foot, five inch lighted Christmas tree and ten cases of water, as well as turkeys donated, uh, six Thanksgiving turkeys donated, um, this is the holiday season, these are donations made by Home Depot, um, Shaw's of Somerset, and the United Methodist Church, Watson Elementary School, Steph's Blaine, requesting the acceptance of thirty Thanksgiving baskets from Saint Anthony of the Desert Church, at Sylvia Elementary School, Principal Patrick Lenz accepts, accepted donations of twenty-six Thanksgiving baskets from the United Way, the Henry Lord Community School accepted thirty pairs of shoes from Happy Feet, as well as, um, sixty turkeys and seventy-five baskets, um, from Pastor Tom, Fonsica, Principal Kathleen Cobb, accepted four baskets, um, from tur, of turkeys and fixings, a donation, um, from Fonska families and staff, Westall Elementary, Principal Rich Lehman, accepted four Thanksgiving Day baskets and, um, ten fifty-dollar gift cards from the United Way, at Watson, again, Stephanie Spillane, accepted toys donated by the Plumbers and Pipefritters Local Union Fifty-One, um, annual toy drive, at Durfee, Principal Jessica Stevens, accepted twenty-five turkeys from Team Providence Youth Football, at Tanzi, Eric Bratt requested acceptance of, um, canned food and non-perishable items, um, from a food drive, um, and they donated to help Angels Anonymous Food Pantry, at Doran, Principal Jason Souza, accepted ten Thanksgiving baskets, and, oh, actually, sixteen Thanksgiving baskets and a one hundred twenty, um, dollar gift card, those are from the YMCA and Stop &amp; Shop, at Resiliency Preparatory Academy, Principal Riley, accepted twelve Thanksgiving baskets, um, with thirty-five dollar gift cards from the First Congregation Church, as well as seven turkeys with fixings from Stop &amp; Shop, twenty-five dollar, five, twenty-five dollar gift cards from the Elks Club, and three fifty-dollar gift cards from CEC People Incorporated, so, I want to thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Twelve of our donors.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
I just, really quickly, just wanted to thank basically the entire community for, um, like, just looking at all these donations right here, shows that we have a strong, um, community, we have strong community partners that know how to come together and support, and support our schools around the time of the holidays, so, it's really great to see, so, I want to, um, give my, um, thanks to every single one of these organizations, um, for their support to our schools and, and the students of our, of our district, thank you, I yield.
Okay, item number ten, approval of grants, we have two, Ms. Larrabee?
I just want to take, uh, make a motion to take early college grant off the table.
Okay, we're gonna hold the second one, early college, does anybody have anything on the targeted assistance grant? Yes? No, did, did you just hold it, she's not taking it off the table, are you?
Yes, sir.
Hold on, you want to table?
I can hold it, all right, I can, motion to hold.
No, you just got questions on us, what you want to say?
I was, you don't take it off the table. It was tabled.
It was tabled, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman?
We, we need to have a motion to take early college off the table, can I get a second on that one first?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, um, before we vote, Mr. Agia?
Did you not make sure we were gonna talk about it, that's all?
Okay, if you want to, um, call the roll on the motion to take it off the table?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, now, we have the two grants, anybody have questions on?
I do, Mr. Jim.
Which one, Mr. Corey?
Uh, the targeted assistance grant.
Okay, we'll hold that one, anybody on the other one, okay, so, we'll hold them both, Mr. Corey?
So, I, I just wanted to, uh, to ask, um, Mr. Reposo, I'm really, really, congratulations on the grant, by the way, it's, it's a very sizable grant, and I'm sure it's, uh, I'm sure it's very necessary for all of the work that you're covering, I'm just curious as to what areas you have targeted, so, where this is gonna go to.
Sure, yeah, so, um, the grant focuses on, um, you know,
Sure, yeah, so the grant focuses on, you know, certain activities just to accelerate achievement in schools, improvement in schools, and so some of those activities include professional development around the science of reading. So over the last few years, we've done extensive professional development on the science of reading for our teachers in K-2, and that's been very well received. We have not yet trained every single person, and so this continues to be an opportunity to do so using these grant funds. We also, similar to that, have facilitated some content academies and professional development in math and science, and so we have the opportunity here to support some of that work at schools and build teacher capacity in math and science through some content academies. Similar, we've also, in the last, last year we piloted, and this year we've expanded investigating history curriculum in the middle school, which is a social studies curriculum in grade six and seven, and so there are some funds here to support rolling that curriculum out and training teachers on that curriculum so they have what they need. We're also purchasing some licenses for Lexia Power Up, which is specifically to accelerate literacy for multilingual learners. That's primarily secondary, so middle and high school, primarily for students that are brand new, you know, considered newcomers, and so that's online software that students engage with. And then we also have some additional professional development related to fractions, statistics, and I think our final expense here is for adult language classes for Spanish. We've had folks express interest in wanting to learn Spanish. As you know, we have a dual language program at Viveris, and so we're looking to potentially offer something to our staff for those who are interested in learning a second language.
So, Mr. Reposo, I remember when that program kicked off at Viveris a few years ago, the dual language program, I know there were a few bumps in the road, kicking it off the ground, but the idea to have a dual language program is really very appropriate for our city. Is it healthy now? Is it doing okay?
Yeah, it's doing well. We actually, you know, we have a pretty strong partnership. We have some, we've partnered with some international teachers as well, so we have international teachers working in the program as well as teachers from here. The Viveris has actually kicked off what they call Nueva Vista, so they do a monthly parent cafe. I had the opportunity to attend last month, or the first cafe with the superintendent, actually, and it was well attended by families. They, you know, sort of discussed an overview of what the program looks like for students, and so I think it's developing well. Tomorrow morning, I believe, or Wednesday morning, rather, we actually, I think, are hosting a visit from another dual language school, so we're also just involved in some networks where we've gone and seen dual language programs, and we'll also host visits as well so that we can share ideas and collaborate, you know, to build an even stronger program with districts that have been doing it longer than us, since we're fairly new to it.
Well, I like to see the growth and development of that, and I know it's not easy launching a program like that, and when it was being vetted, there were people from out of state that were coming in to consult with our people, and so there was already a pretty good wide point of view on that, but for, I think for our city, it's very, very appropriate. Thanks, Ayil.
Mr. Agia?
Just, how long have we been getting this grant? I didn't think this was new.
This is not new, we, but it's gone through the approval, you know, every year we go through the process. What's different this year is the allocation has increased, so I want to say last year, I believe it was 200,000, this year it's a $300,000 allocation from the department.
And when you're applying, why do, how do we get it? Like, what's the qualification?
So, it's basically for schools that are in need of targeted assistance, so because of the performance of some of our schools, right, where they've landed in terms of accountability, we're open to compete for these funds.
And it's almost like an entitlement grant at that point for schools like us?
I think so, yeah, you could describe it that way.
The only question I had is, Mr. Corey brought up the issue of the dual language program.
Yep.
If we could just get a quick paragraph or whatever on what has been the effect of the dual language program on the Viveris school?
Sure.
Like, there's positives and negatives. They have to be in the class, I think it might have affected class size in a not-so-good way, or, you know, as it goes, but if you could just send us something through the superintendent?
Absolutely.
Relative to that. We sound like it's a real good program, but everything has its costs, there's a pros and cons.
Yep.
Thank you, Ayil.
Absolutely, no problem.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I think we have a motion a second?
No.
No, okay. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The second one, early college support grant, Mr. Agia?
Just had some follow-up questions from the, my concerns at the last meeting. So, one of them was around the administrators, and I think the last report that we got indicated that there was administrators getting the pay, so I think some clarification would be needed for the edification of the public, as I can read here, but the public doesn't, so I, doesn't have that right, so I believe the administrators are not necessarily like the vice principal or principals, it was more staff, so I would like somebody to answer what the real story is on that.
Yep, there's one administrator in the program, which is a school counselor, as noted in the update, one pager that I provided, or actually Mr. Woodward provided, he's just not able to be here this evening with some family conflicts, but the administrator that was questioned last meeting is a school counselor position, not a vice principal, not any of the other higher administrator positions.
And the hours are up to 150 hours? That wasn't as clear either, but I see it here that's up to?
Up to, correct. All things that would happen outside of traditional contractual hours, whether that's after-school or on Saturdays or over school vacations, where we're getting kids together to be working on some of their college access pieces of the program.
Understood. Second person in, it says teacher FREA, early college academic specialist. I'm assuming that that was inadvertently listed as one of the two administrators?
Correct. Misinterpreted.
Yep.
Yep.
But that person's in the FREA.
Correct.
The second, third bullet says teacher FREA, but under it says instructional support liaison. I don't know if that means it's...
Not to be confused with our position of instructional support liaison, they support the instruction for the college courses.
So it's not a, it says the same name, but it's not the same?
It does, but it is not the same, correct.
And when I look at some of this, it talks about like an adjunct professor, the person has a, I guess must have the proper credentials to be a professor. One of the questions I have, and it's not for today, but if we can get you to get it at a subcommittee, early college is not, I'm not on that subcommittee anymore, but one of the questions I would have is looking at the class size for early college, as well as the amount of money that we spend on supporting this program. And part of the ask is that I think we offer an awful lot of support to these kids that are in early college classes, and I'm concerned that we're not supporting other special education programming in a similar fashion. It's not to take away from this, I'm just trying to see how that compares, so if we could have a subcommittee meeting or some other venue. The last page is on the sample student schedule, so I thank you for that. I'm not sure that, I'm trying to have a hard time, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out the, how the program actually works throughout the year, so when you do have the subcommittee meeting, if there's any sort of, an expansion of that last piece of the sample schedule, I think the committee should get it, where you talk about the three days for one, two days for another, and how that interacts with the overall Durfee schedule. So I don't want to go on and on about it today, but that's just a question that would, I would like to have answered at some point, and like I said, I'm not on the subcommittee, but I could watch the meeting and see the presentation. Thank you, Ayil.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Item number 11.
If I may, we do have two presentations today from different individuals, and I don't know how far they travel from. I don't know how long contract is going to go forward. I'd like to make a motion that we move 12-1 and 12-2 ahead of contracts.
Second seems common sense.
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with that. Deb, would you call the roll on moving 12-1 and 12-2 ahead of number 11?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Sure.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-1 is a presentation by the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Representative Tracy Novick, field director. Thanks for being here with us, Tracy.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm glad to be with you. So this is in answer to a question that had been posed regarding what it is, you of course, like most school committees in Massachusetts, are members of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and what it is that that membership entails. So this is a brief presentation, I'm of course happy to take your questions at the end of the presentation. And just so that you're aware, I am here, I'm the Central Mass Field Director, I live in Worcester and have most of the Worcester County. I'm here this evening because, as you may be aware, Jim Hardy, the longtime field director, actually retired in August, and you'll be getting a new field director in February. In the meantime, we're covering. So this appears to be going all by itself, sorry about that. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees is the statewide professional organization for school committees, and it was established by school committees for school committees in the 1960s. Among our founders is the late Speaker of the House, Tip O'Neill, when he was a member of the Cambridge School Committee, and we are a member-driven, member-organized organization. Our mission is to achieve excellence in school leadership through advocacy, through training, and through service. The Board of Directors is, are all school committee members, all of our leadership are serving school committee members, is elected by the membership of MASCE. The executive director, excuse me, the executive board is elected at the Annual Delegate Assembly. Some of you may have attended that either this year or in the past. It's handed, held annually in November. Every school committee in Massachusetts who is a member of the association have a right to elect and send a delegate to the delegate assembly. The chairs of each division, all of whom also serve on the MASCE board, are elected by each division, and it is the chairs that sit on the board, the board meets monthly to set direction for the association over the course of the year. Additionally, of course, at the delegate assembly, and you may well have actually considered the items before the delegate assembly prior to November, actually sets overall direction for the year. Any school committee in Massachusetts can propose a resolution for the delegate assembly, it goes to the resolution committee for consideration. Additionally, if a group of school committees from across the state pose a resolution, it automatically goes to the delegate assembly. We do have a number of divisions, as I mentioned. The first are geographic, that is what the map shows. You are members automatically by virtue of your geography of Division III, and by virtue being a city school committee, you are also automatically members of Division IX, which is the Urbans Division. There also is a vocational technical division, and there has been organized a Division X, which is inclusion, diversity, and equity. There are also a number of subcommittees that members of committees can choose to put themselves forward for. As I mentioned, the resolutions committee, there's a legislative committee, there's one on special education, you can find a full list on our website. One of the most important jobs that we do with the association is that we provide the legally mandated training for school committee members under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 36A. Every school committee member in Massachusetts in their first year serving in office is required to have eight hours of training. We are the organization under the MGL that provides that training. We call it charting the course. We provide it across the state, somewhere between eight and 10 times a year, try to make sure that we are geographically distributed in terms of that. We just provided it this past Saturday, most recently, up at Monty Tech in Fitchburg. Additionally, in terms of training, any school committee can request that their field director come in and provide training for them on really any aspect of their role. We quite regularly are providing professional development across the state, roles and responsibility, open meeting law. I do a lot of, one of my areas of expertise is school finance, I do a lot of presentations on school finance across the state, and so we are regularly in front of school committees, either as part of their regular meetings, or as a best practice, of course, school committees have retreats where they set priorities and set direction together for the district. That is regularly something that we are engaged to do. MASCE also started when we were sort of all fully remote, providing learning lunches, which is the first, usually the first Friday every month, which is an hour presentation at noon time, on topics that we see being raised by members. Something that we, for field directors in particular, regularly put our heads together and come up with things that we see people needing presentations on, needing professional development on. Division meetings can also include training, and so if there's a geographic or an interest-based division that all feels that they need the same professional development, that's something that we frequently do. We also do have two regular, larger gatherings. One is the Summer Institute, which usually takes place in Marlboro in July, and then, of course, the joint conference that we have with the Association of Superintendents every year in November. The field services, this is a short slide, but it's by far the largest part of what I do as a field director. We are available as field staff, and the, frankly, those who are in the office every day are available, to answer the phone, answer emails, respond to questions. We are ongoingly getting questions from members to make sure that they are observing their own role, fulfilling their own role, answering their questions in terms of making sure that their process abides by the laws under which school committees in Massachusetts operate, answering questions about things that are going on at the state level within their divisions and so forth. Also, both the board and the staff are engaged in ensuring that school committees have what they need in terms of state and national advocacy, in addition to being part of the National Association, making sure that you have what you need as things continue to develop at the legislature, within the State House, and on the national scene. We also provide policy updates. You probably are familiar with this as a member, if any of you who have been on the school committee for any length of time. As laws change, or as regulations change, at either the federal level or at the state level, we are the organization that reviews and we provide model policy. You have no policies until you adopt them locally, but a part of our responsibility as an association is to be tracking what's going on at those other levels that then require you to have updates. We also are ongoingly involved in review of policies to make sure that they are updated, that they are brought into best practice and so forth. Again, obviously, policy updates that were under your purview. There are two services that we provide on a contractual basis, meaning that they are outside of what you pay for as part of your dues. One is a policy manual review. Districts can choose to contract with the association, to have we, as an association, align your policies with the model policies, and then actually sit with you over a series of months and review each of your policies in turn to ensure that they're up to date, that they align with your best practice, that they align with best practice, that they have appropriate citation, and so forth. The other thing, of course, is superintendent searches. We are among the organizations in Massachusetts that provide staffing for superintendent searches. A number of things that we have ongoing, again, probably that you're familiar with appearing in your mailbox, we have the, our MASCE bulletin, which comes out periodically about, about once a month or so, updating you on what's going on, not only with the association, but with your colleagues across the state. We also provide legal updates, as there are updates coming from, again, the legislature, the federal government, the Supreme Court, the SJC. We update all of those. Anytime we've sent out a policy update, we make sure that there is a policy bulletin alongside that, so that you can understand what it is that's actually being changed and why it is that we are proposing that you do so. Annually, of course, you receive a Massachusetts General Law selection from MASCE, which provides the education laws for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our website's constantly updating, and we do actually also send out news updates as they appear, those are electronic. Couple of things that we also run, these are actually things that I do, we have a Facebook page, we have a LinkedIn page, we have an Instagram page, we have a Twitter feed, we're also on Threads, I should say. also on Threads, I should say. The other thing you can do is, as a member, you can sign up for the Listserve. It's a place for you to pose questions to your colleagues across the state. And the other thing is that we have these past couple of years started putting, sending out on a daily basis, something that you would need to sign up for. We don't subject you to daily email without you asking for it. Something we refer to as the Daily Ed, which is a collection of education news from across the Commonwealth and across the country, which we provide to members, although honestly, anyone can sign up for it, so that, again, as part of making sure that you have the information that you need in order to do your jobs appropriately. And that, Mr. Chair, is my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. I'll start off with two questions. For the Field Services, does that include, like, individual members such as myself can call and request information?
Individual members call us all the time, yes.
Okay. And second question on the policy, the policy recommendations that MASC does. Who is in charge of, like, making those policy recommendations? I know you, you talked about the process, but is there some sort of committees, is it a committee of school committee members, or is it like the administrative staff of MASC?
So we, they can be, they can come from a number of places. One is that if we, in our policy projects, are finding that a number of school committees have a common question, we might bring it back. What, the, the main review, though, of course, is done by MASC Legal Counsel, and that's always done prior to it actually going out to you. So we generally work on it together as a staff, but then, of course, it's reviewed by Legal Counsel prior to it coming out as a recommendation of the association.
Thank you. And the last question, based off of some of the services that you offer, like individual, like, within our membership. I didn't, I did go through it briefly, but I just want to make sure it's up to date. I didn't see it on the slides, but if you know, what individual services, like trainings, does your, you, you all offer to school committees?
I mean, we respond to what is needed. So a lot of our stuff is actually developed based on what people are asking us for, but very commonly, and just off the, off the top of my head, we are frequently in front of school committees, talking about their role versus their superintendent's role, legally what the bounds of the school committee are. We do a lot of training on budget and finance, do a lot of review on both open meeting law and the state ethics. We do a decent amount of work with school committees around goal setting, on setting school committee protocols. We work with school committees on setting their own goals. We are always happy to come in and work with school committees ahead of their superintendent evaluation, since that's one of your jobs as well. I mean, I think those are the main things?
Decor, I believe I saw decorum on the website, decorum training?
You may have seen that. It's not something that I've actually done myself. We usually urge committees, if they're talking about that, to make sure that they're aligned in terms of open meeting law, and also to talk about potentially having operating protocols, so that you have a common understanding of your relationship with each other and with the superintendent.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Corey.
I'm curious about what you can tell me about the VOTE Tech Division.
So the, any district that has, obviously, the regional VOTE Techs are all members of that, but also any school district that actually has a vocational school itself also is eligible to be a member of that. So for example, Boston, Springfield, and Worcester are also members of Division Eight.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I can't.
I'm sorry, am I talking too quickly? I have a habit of doing that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not understanding you. It's only because of the acoustics in this room.
Certainly.
So I'm sorry.
Certainly, the, the regional VOTE Techs, right, Greater Fall River, Greater New Bedford, and so forth, are all members of that. But any school dis, any school committee that itself has a vocational, an independent vocational school, is also a member of Division Eight. So Worcester, for example, has Worcester Tech. Springfield and Boston both, both contain their own vocational schools, and they are also members of Division Eight.
Okay, thanks. That answers that, but I got one more question. This one's more out of curiosity than anything. In your experience and in your overview of other districts throughout the state, do you, do you view school committee action more as supportive, or adversarial, or, you know, investigative, so to speak?
Adversarial or investigative, like, vis a vis whom, I guess I would wonder?
Well, just as far as like a, a school committee's relationship with the administration and the schools in their districts, do you, do you notice that more school committees act supportively, or do they act, you know, adversarially?
So one, one of the ways that we, particularly stemming out of work that we did during Race to the Top, tend to frame the, the relationship between the school committee and the administration is as a governance team. So the school committee hires the superintendent, sets goals for the superintendent, evaluates the superintendent. Superintendent is there to fulfill those actions as provided. And then the school committee has the realm of making sure that they're setting appropriate goals, setting good policy, setting a budget that actually keeps the administration functioning. So I would say that we, we would hope, and we would want people working towards a mutual, mutually supportive relationship, which doesn't mean that there isn't going to be disagreement. We hope that it's principled and professional, but it should be something where everybody has in mind, not only the good of the students, which of course are the, the primary reason any of us are here, but also have in common the, the way in which you're getting there, which is really about having a common set of goals that have been established.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Agia.
Thank you. Just a few questions. So I know one of the slides talked about the superintendent search process, and I don't want to rehash the entire process, but I for one wasn't happy with how the MASC received the contract to do the superintendent search, because school committee members weren't aware of any of the contracts, we weren't part of any of the process. Is that a typical thing that you see in when a district is creating a superintendent search, that school committee members are not involved?
So I can't, I can't, I wasn't obviously part of your search. I was busy in central Massachusetts at the time that your search was going on. The contract, of course, is actually with the school committee. School committee obviously has the authority to, to hire the superintendent, and at the end of the day, I mean, the purview of the school committee is pretty broad when it comes to hiring the superintendent. So there really isn't anything that, that we do that changes that in any way, because your legal purview is so broad.
Right, so as a, just a follow-up to that, so we weren't part of the process, so Glenn Future was the person representing the MASC. Now, I personally told him via email that we didn't vote to even create a search committee, as an example. And my comment to him was, do you represent the school committee, like, all members, or just the chairman? And we got nowhere on it. So I say that to you only in that you're here on his behalf as the Executive Director, but I think you all should take a peek at how that process went, and I'd be happy to share my email with him. Glenn is usually very candid with just what he says, but that is exactly how the process worked, and I think that's still a problem. So moving forward to this, whether it's this district or another, I think there needs to be some tightening, tightening up of those processes, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot at all. My question for you, though, you said federal, you're on federal and state, and I know, watching some of the things you post all the time, you're very informative on votes coming up, where things are heading, what's hap, what's going on. So while we have you, do you project an increase in federal funding over the next year?
I, I love it when people are asking me for my crystal ball. So federal funding has been fairly flat for a significant number of years, which, of course, as you all know, feels like a, feels like a, feels like it's going backwards, right, because you're trying to do the same amount of things with a smaller amount of money. The federal government, of course, has still not actually passed a budget. I believe that they're down into something like 12 days before we run out of federal budget again, just as something else to worry about, not that you need another thing. I think that, given what we are hearing of sort of the national murmuring, for lack of a better word, there's going to be a lot of, there, it appears that there's going to be some conversations as to maybe less the amount of funding and more the format it takes. So I would say that, and again, this is just me, so, you know, take of that what you will, it's my opinion, but it's my professional one. I would be surprised if we see increases in federal funding, and I would be concerned as to what is going to be done in terms of the format of federal funding. Let me add, this is a caveat, we of course all have seen the headlines about the United States Department of Education and the incoming president wanting to end it. I will say that I'm a little bit more concerned about the United States Department of Agriculture and the support for free lunch. I would assume that you all are universal free lunch funded through USDA. It's a little easier to tweak through regulation, whereas USDAE would have to actually go through both chambers of Congress, of Congress, excuse me. I hope that answers your question.
It did, it did. So I think everyone that is paying attention understands that we're probably going to get some cuts in Title I and federal funding moving forward. And that's one of the concerns that I have, and that's why we pay you guys to advocate to at least tell us, so that we can be prepared for that potential cut. That's basically where, and I think you're probably going to be putting out more memos and stuff as it goes, as we find out more information, so I appreciate that info. But my last question is along, sort of, how school committee members get their information? And is it your opinion that school committee members should ask questions of the superintendent? Or should they not ask questions of the superintendent?
In what context? During the meeting?
During a meeting, between meetings, email and asking for information relative to budgets or things that are happening, so that we can make informed decisions. We meet once a month here. So I'm curious as to what your opinion is and what the MASC's opinion is on asking questions of the superintendent.
So the, the thing that's, that is an important thing for school committees to hold in a balance, which can be a challenge, is that the actual, the, the boss of the superintendent, for lack of a better word, the, the oversight of the superintendent, is done by the school committee as a body, which of course you as a body only exist when you're sitting in public session, and under a properly posted agenda, meeting on things under your purview. So when it comes to making major requests for information that would require time and reports and so forth, that's something that we say needs to come from the body, because only the body can direct the superintendent in terms of large expenditures of time for staff and so forth. When it comes to budget in particular, obviously, and particularly given what we know are tight financial times with the low inflation rate and so forth, that's something that cost center authority belongs to the school committee, and obviously you need to be doing close inquiry and close examination of things like the budget when they come before you. So that is something that particularly within the meeting of the school committee, when you are meeting on things like budget, it's important for you to be asking informed questions, and we would certainly never advocate for you to simply pass things without checking into them when it comes to you meeting as a public body.
Yeah, so like, we just, you probably heard from the meeting, we were told last week that we were over budget on a couple of playgrounds by $700,000. And that money was supposed to be used for something else. So at that point, does the school committee member have a right to ask the questions about how did we get to this point, and to try to research it, to figure out, how did we get to that point, when we have a $700,000 overspent line item?
So I would assume that that was being presented to you as part of a larger budget presentation, and thus, it also then ends up potentially depending on whether or not you're over cost center, coming back to the school committee and potentially needing a budget transfer. So within the, again, within the body of the school committee meeting as a body, talking about budget, that's something where having a conversation as a body as to how you'll move forward is important, because you can, of course, only resolve that issue together as a body, it's not something that any individual member can actually fix.
So I think fact-finding is, I guess, the way I'm looking at it, to see between meetings when we don't meet, how do we get the information to be able to figure out, figure things out? And I'm not, I know you're only one person, but when I look at what the role of MASC would be, I think it needs to be clarified for what people either, you can make recommendations, but it's not illegal to ask questions of superintendent or in any district. And I think that's where I think we're going to probably need your support to figure out what is the process, because here in Fall River, we are trying to not ask questions, and I think that's part of the problem. So in the future, if we'd had those questions, to Mr. Dias's point, do we just call somebody up there and ask for policy updates individually, as, I think that's what you said to Mr. Dias?
So people can, certainly any individual member can, can call MASC and ask for advice at any time. To answer your larger question in terms of potentially like a disagreement around process, around asking questions and purview, that's something where, that is exactly the kind of experience where we would talk at the school committee meeting together to establish a common set of protocols as to what exactly are the expectations of the school committee, both at a meeting and in between meetings. When we do protocol setting, one of the things that we do is we talk about, you know, what are the issues you see at a meeting, in between meetings, before meetings, around the agenda, and so forth, and that's exactly the kind of conversation that you would need to do, because to have a common understanding, I mean, one of the things that I tell school committees, which I think can be a struggle, because of course you all ran for these positions for a reason, is that the administration is, their primary role is actually not to answer school committee questions, right? You want them to be spending most of their time administering the district. So how do you make sure that that's actually what you're doing as a body? Whatever it is that you need to do as a body to make sure that that can happen, is probably what you would need to pursue. And again, if you're having a disagreement about that, that's something that you really need to have a conversation about within, really, I would say, a protocol-setting process.
My last question, and it might not be, you, I recently found out last year or two years ago that we have Board Docs, and that it's actually a MASC-paid program. So I don't know if you're the person, or do you have a Board Docs representative within your organization to ask Board Docs questions?
We don't, no. They were, I don't, I actually don't even know where we're at with Board Docs at this point, that was a number of years ago where we were working with them more directly. I could certainly find out for you where we're at with that, but Board Docs, you would need to contact Board Docs themselves if you actually have conversation, questions about that.
But the payment goes to MASC?
I know that contractually there was a percentage that was going to MASC, and if that's still the case, that may well be, I don't handle that end of things.
Yeah, I think our whole entire amount went, so we'll, I guess, ask individually or through the chair to figure out, how do we get that information? Because the contract's coming up, and I for one don't think it's doing what we were told, and I didn't know who that person is. If it's not you, somebody should be able to come to us and say, this is why we want to continue the contract, or whatever, so thank you very much, I yield.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Next up. Well, are we going to take the one we already moved and take the next one? On 12-3, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Want to make a motion to move 12-3 as well come before contact, contracts, I should say.
Because CTEV people are sitting up in the back, so they come down after Mr. Guilfoyle.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Can I, Deb, can you call the roll?
Is anybody even here for 12-2? 12-2, is anybody even here?
12-2 is there, and then he's next, and then 12-3, because they're waiting also.
Got it.
Deb, can you call the roll, please?
Who seconded the motion?
Oh, Mr. Dias seconded it.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Slarvey?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yep.
Hey, Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Guilfoyle. Presentation for the Public Relations Academy, 12-2.
Good evening. I'm actually not Mr. Guilfoyle, I work for Mr. Guilfoyle.
Okay.
And he's a great guy, but I'm, I'm not him this evening. So let me stop by introducing myself, and then I'll tell you a little bit about the company. So my name is Paul Zinni. I'm actually a recently retired school superintendent. I spent almost 37 years in public education, the last 10 years of which I was a superintendent, first in Avon, then in King Philip Regional. I actually started my teaching career, my student teaching, right here in Fall River. I grew up in Somerset, went to Bridgewater State, and I did two student teachings, one at the Tansy Elementary School, and one at the Dubuque. So a couple of you are still nodding your head remembering the Dubuque, yes, just a few years ago. few years ago. Um, I will share with you that, uh, I'll tell you a little bit about the company tonight, but I'm here to tell you about it because I am actually a big fan. Um, as a school superintendent, I was not, not only the superintendent, I was also a client. So, uh, it's kind of like that old Hair Club for Men commercial, when they talk about the fact that I'm not just a client, I, I'm the, the president, and that's where it comes out as well. I was a very happy client, um, they made a very big difference for me as I was running, um, a school district. So John Guilfoyle Public Relations has actually been around for about 11 years. It was started by John Guilfoyle. He's a former, um, press secretary for Mayor Menino out of Boston, and actually was responsible for, um, supporting, um, all of the press during the terrible Boston Marathon bombing. Uh, he was on site and, and in charge of that. Um, he was a Boston Globe reporter and, um, an excellent resource in public relations. When Menino stepped out of office, he found himself looking for a career and opened the company. We started with one person, we're now a company of 20 individuals with two locations, one north of Boston and one south of Boston, we're located in Canton. John Guilfoyle Public Relations is actually a very unique organization in that it only works with municipalities and their departments. So we work with cities and towns, police, fire, and schools. Those are basically all of our clients. Occasionally, we work with something tangential, like we, uh, the, the Massachusetts Organization of, um, uh, collaboratives, school collaboratives is one of our, you know, clients, so they work with collab, education collaboratives, and so it's still tangentially related. Um, we have over 300 clients, mostly in New England and mostly in Massachusetts, but we serve as 14 states altogether. We have three divisions, we have the division that is digital, um, it's our website design, logo design, all things kind of electronic that works in that division. We have a public relations division, which I'll circle back to, and then we have our academy, which I serve as the director of education, training and development, and run the academy. The academy actually offers an extensive array of professional development, I, um, basically in all areas, leadership, um, including leadership and training in schools and school committee training. And so we offer a lot of what MASC has to offer, and as a former superintendent, I know they do a great job, but we also come in and can do complimentary workshops, um, along with them, around setting norms, around, um, working collaboratively and effective communication. And basically, one of my messages will be is, we speak with one voice. Public relations is the area that we're known most for, um, basically what we do is help you to tell your story. We heard that a couple of times tonight, Mr. Aguirre, I was talking about the feelings that you had heard messages here in the audience, and then you had some thoughts that you had wanted or wished that people knew that the committee felt. Um, we also heard, um, stories this evening. Storytelling is a big part of the messaging, and we help districts and we help towns, police, fire, to tell the important stories about who they are. We're not talking about making up fiction, we're talking about telling the facts. But we know in this day and age with multimedia and social media, that you can't message and manage simultaneously. When I was an elementary principal years ago, if something happened on the playground, I could go back to my office, I could dictate it to my secretary, who would then type it up, run it off on the mimeograph machine, remember, we all remember that? Smell the nice pink, right? And then put it all in the backpacks and send it home to our kids. Not today. As a superintendent, I had a bathroom fire just before I retired, just paper towels in the barrel that were on fire from a student who threw their vape away and a spark caught it on fire. By the time the students exited the building, the fire was out, but parents were on social media with all kinds of stories about kids trapped on the second floor and what's going on, people wanting to get into their cars. You can't manage and message simultaneously. And so that's where we come in. We work with primarily, as I said, school districts to help them to do that. So a lot of the work we do, we call crisis communication, and we consider crisis communication anything that takes the superintendent and her team away from the important work that they need to do, because they're too busy messaging and trying to manage some type of message. So it's not necessarily a crisis where we have, you know, emergency vehicles showing up at the building, but it's a crisis of time, where you're managing the message rather than managing what should be going on. So we help a lot with that, but we also recognize that truly the best way to manage crisis communication is when you manage the good news stories as well, when you create a system of trust, where people are interested in what's going on in the community, where they feel like they know what's happening. And so we really talk about a 95-5 split. We talk about 95% of what should be put out should be the good news stories. And in fact, I heard at least a half dozen of them this evening. You'd had, you started off with an award ceremony where you honored the band that won a, a national award. That should be told. Now, there were some people, I'm sure, home watching your meeting this evening, but that story could easily get lost by the majority of people who would love hearing it. You've got a bilingual program going on in one of your schools, you have an increase in a grant that you receive from the state, you have a dual college program that's going on with collaboration from schools, the superintendent read a long list of very generous people in your community that are donating to your schools. There was significant community collaboration, I heard it from all you people, as you thanked the donors. Getting that message out beyond the minutes of your meeting in a way that the, the community can consume that is important. And so that's where we come in, and we help school districts to tell their story. It's not spin, it's the facts, but it's telling the story that your administrators don't have the time to tell. So basically, that's what we do, we've been involved with Fall River, uh, we came on in 2020 when you had some difficult times, and we were brought on, um, kind of on a contractual basis for that. We've done some professional development in the city, and we've been working through the last administration and this administration for about a year now. And so I was just here because there seemed to be some questions about who we are and what we do, and so I wanted to just kind of give you that overview and then allow you to ask some questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Ms. Larvee, then Mr. Dias.
Thanks for being here today.
My pleasure.
I know it's been a few minutes, so.
Well, it's kind of reminiscent of the many, many, many years that I was at school committee meetings.
I guess I just want to get into, um, your responsibilities and, um, the interaction you have with the administration, what we're asking you to do, what they're asking you to do. Um, talk a little bit about that, about your relationship with the, um, the administration.
Sure. So we work for you, the school district, you're our client, but we can't put the stories out unless we have the information. So we rely on you to give us that kind of, I, I, I guess, a heads up, that something's happening. Sometimes it could be in advance of, or it could be after the fact, but we need the information to come to us so that we can then write that, that, that out for you. The team in Canton, there are a number of people, we have the South team, so when Fall River has something that they would like to get out, and they want our help with it, all they do is contact the South team, and one of our, our account manager will assign one of the people in the office to put that together. None of our, uh, releases ever go out without the superintendent's sign-off or her designee. Um, we do a variety of different, what we call pieces of content, in that it depends on what we're showcasing, what might be the method that we, we should actually showcase with. So it could be a good news story that rises to the level of a press release, and we write it in a press release format, our people are all journalists, they know exactly what, you know, how to format that, and we would send that to the local press. It could be the papers, it could also be the, the TV stations, depending on the magnitude of the press release and what, what information we're getting out. It could also be writing a letter on behalf of the superintendent. During COVID, JGPR wrote all of my correspondence home, because things were changing so quickly, and I needed to get information out, but I didn't have a large administrative team, so we were all hands on deck. I could notify them, mask mandate has changed, and I had a letter ready to send home. So we're able to do that kind of thing as well, infographics, a variety of different methods, and we're happy to consult with you on, this feels more like a small piece that we can give you so you can add to your school's newsletter versus, this might be a letter that should go home to all families because of the incident that happened in the school, and we'll help you write it, or this is a press release. So again, that information back and forth. I will say that because we came in partway through one administrative team and if it started with another one, we have not been probably on all cylinders as far as getting that information back and forth. Um, we, I would love to see us get a little bit more of the positive stories out for you, um, but, you know, we're, we're really kind of working on that, kind of, you know, now that your administrative team is, you know, hired from the summertime, new people are in place, they're learning their positions, and we're starting to get that rhythm together to kind of get better at getting that out for you.
Right, I'm glad you mentioned that. Um, my follow-up question to that is, you came on FY '24, '25?
Uh huh.
Um, no, so that would be '23, '24, correct?
We came on in the fall of last year, so it's just been over a year, right.
23, '24, and this is your second year, your final?
Into our second year, yes.
Final second year of the contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I'm going to yield for now.
Okay, I think, Mr. Dias?
I believe I was next, yes. Um, and Ms., um, Ms. Larvee asked, she, um, asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask as well, um, and I want, um, to talk about, um, three points right now. First, um, you mentioned the lack of communication, or, or lack for better words, with the administration, you weren't trying to work to get there. Um, do you believe the administration is fully utilizing you, like in terms of, um, social media?
I think we're, we're moving in that direction. So every district, by the way, works differently, um, Mr. Dias. I would tell you that, um, we have some districts that feel that, they consult with us mostly around crisis communication, and they feel that that's what they're comfortable with, and that's what they want to do, and other districts contact us all the time. I was one of those heavy users, the joke in my district was that if I actually had to send something out, I had to write like the PR company, because no one would recognize my voice. Um, but there are, there are the extremes of that, but what I would say is, cities sometimes are more complicated, because you've got a lot going on in a lot of different buildings, and so the superintendent is running all things. And so central offices' ability to let us know that a, a great science lesson happened in, um, the Veris, Veris School, and you'd like to get that story out, it was a great STEM lesson and, you know, something like that, that sometimes doesn't get to us, because too many things are happening and we didn't, you know, the message just didn't get conveyed. So we need to continue to work collaboratively to figure out the best method, so that, you know, principals perhaps are contacting us directly, and then the final approval is for the superintendent. Different school systems handle that differently, and it's, I don't think any two handle it the same way. So what I would say is, I think there's more that we could be doing, definitely, but I think it's, part of that is really getting the rhythm together, um, and I think we can continue to do that moving forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a second.
Might I just interrupt? I thought we were going to take 12-3 first, because it's going to be quicker. I have questions for this gentleman, can we just pause this and get Ms. Sylvia down and deal with that? Because quite frankly, I have a few questions, but I feel like I'm asking them at their peril. Um, can we just put a pause on this and have Ms. Sylvia come down and address 12-3?
I, I don't have a problem with that. Do I need to vote for that, Mr. Assad? We already said to take it out of order. Mr. Feeney, you don't mind giving us one second, I'm pretty sure this will be very quick.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is 12, item number 12-3, we're just taking it, we've already voted to take it out of order, we want to get Ms. Sylvia out of here as fast as we could, go ahead.
Thanks, so, um, as by state law, we have to approve the advisory committee. As you can see, it's increased from last year to this year, we have a very robust advisory committee, and, um, we work with the workforce development board and our local partners and parent students to create, um, advisories for all 10 of our programs, so that we can make good decisions, especially with our comprehensive local needs assessment.
Motion approved, and thank you.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Mr. Dias?
Um, just very quickly, actually, a request for information, I don't know if we need a full vote, I'm just, I was just wondering what the, um, does, I don't need it today, I'm going to vote to approve it, but what the state law is governing these advisory committees, um, if we can just get that in an email.
You can get it online.
This, yeah, the state law just says, you have to approve, it has to be brought before the school committee for approval every year. So I come every year with the list of advisory members, and...
And these are basically folks throughout the district, I, I did look at the list, so I saw different, um, community members and whatnot.
There's a, there's a definite, definite makeup to each advisory board, for instance, in construction, we have labor union representation, we have contractors, we have parents, we have students, we have, um, we actually have somebody with, um, if I'm not mistaken, McCourt, where they own their own company, so that we know what the needs are, and they evaluate our programs, they evaluate our curriculums, they evaluate our, our equipment, and we meet twice a year. And then later on, um, there can also be a meeting with just the chairman and the body.
The chairman of the school committee?
Of the, no, of the advisory committee.
Okay, very well, thank you, I yield.
Just one quick comment.
Mr. Aguirre?
So I just want to say thank you to you for what you're doing here. Ever since you've came on here, you tell us what the regulations are, you fix some things that are not, that we were doing that were not part of the regulations, so I for one appreciate what you're doing, I think you're doing a great job. I yield, thank you.
All right, can we get a roll call then? Uh, where did Deb go?
Oh, she's going to ask, sure.
You want to give it a call?
We can call it.
Yeah, you can call it.
All in favor?
Do a voicemail?
Aye.
Okay, uh, um, all in favor, oh, you want to do it? Go ahead, you feel like the same.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Bailey? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Back to Mr.
One, one last thing that I just want to just make the body aware of, thanks to our advisory board and our construction program, we became the first construction, uh, construction craft labor program in the state of Massachusetts.
Congratulations.
To have a pre-apprenticeship program approved by the Department of Labor that gives our kids a direct line into the apprenticeship program in the laborers' union, the only, the very first one, and at this point, the only one, and that has a lot to do with this advisory board and the membership that our, our teachers put together, the thoughtful membership that they put together for our kids.
Thank you, very great.
That's fantastic. Did you hear that, Mr. Zinni?
Ms. Sylvia, one question, please. So in, in, in the construction craft labor course for your students?
Yes.
Are they being apprised of the OSHA laws as well?
Uh, they get, by the time they graduate out of, uh, construction, they have OSHA 10 and 30.
That's all I need, no, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Feeney. Come on back.
Mr. Chair, do I still have the floor?
Do you still have the floor?
Do I? Do I still have the floor?
Oh, yeah, I, I guess, yeah, you cut into, go ahead.
Thank you, I, um, that's my train of thought, I do know, um, we're talking about utilization, um, I'll just start with another question about, um, social media, um, do you, um, does your organization manage, or can they manage social, like, social media platforms for the district?
Yes, sir, that's our digital division. We do website design, design, development and maintenance, and we then, when we build those out, we're able to then put a news blog on that homepage, and then we're able to tie it to all social media channels. If you have a separate system already, such as your website is already built and you have those social media, all we can do is create things for you in those formats that you can then post. So if you want us to manage it, we can do that, but we have to build it, so that we then have entrance through the backend to post what we need to post.
Okay, um, and if you don't know the answer to this, I understand, but do you know how often the district uses, um, has used your services, like a number?
Uh, no, I don't know a number, and I would say that because it fluctuates, you know, it depends on what issues you have going on. Now, tonight, I just, you know, got a wealth of, of different topics to talk about, one more we just heard about. So I can guarantee you that tomorrow I'll be talking with our account manager, and we'll be reaching out to Fall River to make sure that we get a little bit more information, or at least contact people, that we can then find out more about some of these stories to help you get some of them out.
Thank you, and final question, um, I know you work with the Fall River Public Schools, do you also work with the city of Fall River? Do you also work with the city of Fall River, or is it just the Fall River Public Schools? You don't work on the city side?
I, I don't, I manage mostly the school side, so I don't have the complete list in, um, memorized. I don't believe we work with the, the city of Fall River or the, the police or fire. But we do work with many police, fire, and municipalities.
Thank you, um, thank you for answering my questions. I yield, Mr. Chair.
Who's down there, Mr. Corey? Did you have a question? Or Mr. Aguirre?
So, so, thank you for the presentation. One of the things that I think we are looking for information from the superintendent, uh, is there any updates on the contract, the signed contract? Any of the email, did anybody verify whether we have the email that said it was a one-year contract or two? Any updates on that?
I would have to defer the superintendent to be working with Mr. Guilfoyle on that one. I, I don't manage the record piece of it.
I apologize, I, I was meaning to ask the superintendent.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, no, I don't have an update. I don't, I was not very attentive to my email today. I don't know if I have a response.
Okay, so, just for the edification of the public, so, we, as a school committee, excuse me, I don't believe have ever voted to have Guilfoyle Communications come in, in that contract, as a school committee, just so you know the perspective.
Sure.
Uh, we never voted on that. We never knew what you were supposed to do, we never knew what you do. Uh, we also didn't know that it was a two-year contract rather than a one-year contract. So, the question I was asking the superintendent was, apparently, we have emails that say it was a one-year contract. The contract that we've seen isn't signed, we don't have the signed copy, but on one page it says 12 months minimum, and then in the fine print, it says a two-year contract. So, there is some, uh, I guess, controversy over whether it's a one-year, two-year, who authorized it, and what do we do, what, what don't we do? So, I have the same question that Mr. Dias said. In the contract, it states that your company will provide up to five or six media-ish things, whatever, monthly. Now, we don't have that. I don't believe that you've done 60, um, pieces. But I don't know, as one school committee member, I have no idea what you do, what you don't do, because we have received basically almost no information. And Dr. Curly recently, the last couple of months, is trying to help to get some clarity. But for those first 10 months, in my opinion, we had no idea what you were doing or what you were supposed to be doing. We don't know the scope of your work, we don't know any of that information. So, I'm not trying to come off as negative towards your company, uh, but I have some concerns about how the whole thing went. What I do know is, one of the things that I did see, um, even though people said they didn't understand or didn't know that your company existed, was that your company assisted the prior superintendent write a press release that she was retiring. On the list of priorities that you just named about the good things that you would report on across all of your experience, all of your company's experience, all of that stuff, probably one of the lowest things on the list, in my opinion, for what we should've been paying you for or your company for, was to help her write something to say that she's retiring. So, that is what we get from your company, because I'm not seeing anything otherwise. So, I'm, I'm just telling you, being transparent about where I'm coming from.
Sure. So, Mr. Aguirre, if, if that's actually a question, I, I would be happy to address it. What I can tell you is, all we can report on is what you share with us. So, when we came on in November, I was actually here with our senior vice president, and we made the proposal. We put out the proposal, we said what it looked like. Five to six pieces of content, crisis communication, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can call us at midnight on Saturday if, if something terrible happened, and we will help you through that. It's all part of the package. We then reached out periodically and said, "Send us some information, tell us what's going on." We have, as I said, 300 clients. We, I, I don't know all of the great things going on in your elementary school. I can hypothesize, because as I said, I spent 37 years in public education, and I know Fall River. I grew up in this area, my mother's from here. That said, I can't make those stories up. I need you, as a district, to contact our office and say, "Hey, we've got this piece happening." When you do, we ask for contact information. So, in other words, if anyone were to let us know about, about the, the things we heard tonight, we would say, "Who should we reach out to?" As soon as we get that information, our people will reach out, they'll ask the appropriate questions, and they will put the appropriate document together to tell that. So, I think because we've seen kind of that transition, one administration kind of leaving, and a new one coming in, and quite honestly, I was a new superintendent twice in two different districts. There is a lot going on. When you first walk in, and you're hiring new administration, and you're doing a lot of things, quite honestly, I will tell you, my first priority wasn't thinking about, "How do I get the story out about this or that?" We need, you know, and so, we reached out, we made suggestions, we got some information back, we put some things together. But we're now, I think, getting into that flow a little bit better, and I think we can help you to tell the good stories because right now, some of the stories out there aren't as positive as you'd like them to be. There are a lot of great things happening in Fall River, you have a huge amount to celebrate. Your community should know about that, and they should know just how much all of you care about the kids. You're here, well, I've been here over three hours, or going on three hours, and I know that you've been here before, and you're gonna be here after I leave. That's dedication, you're volunteers. We need to tell that story. We can help with that, but you're right, did you maximize, were we putting out six stories for you per month? No, we weren't. Would we like to? Do we have the people who are available to do so? Yes, we do.
I understand, and thank you for the clarification, and, uh, the, I'm assuming, are you the person for Fall River? Like, are you our point person?
So, we intentionally don't have a point person. We have a team. So, the South Team is, as I said, based in Canton, but handles southeastern Massachusetts. And the reason why we don't have a point person is because what we've discovered is, crises happen multiple times all at once, and then nothing at all, right? We have multiple things going on, and then nothing. And so, what we've discovered is, when we assigned Mr. Aguirre as the point person for Fall River and Somerset and Swansea, they're each having a crisis at the same time, and you're trying to manage it, and I've got two other people in the office who are not, you know, doing anything, so they're trying to fill in and help out. What we have is a team of four excellent journalists working in the Canton office, and each morning, we have a morning meeting. Those people sit down, and we look at what's on the docket for the day, and that gets assigned. And then, as anything comes up, if the superintendent were to contact us at 1:00 in the afternoon and say, "We have an uh-oh moment going on, and we need to process, and we need someone to help us with," we then assign accordingly. I will tell you that nothing goes out without at least, uh, two people looking at it. So, we have editors as well as writers. So, if John wrote it, Fred reads it, and so, we, that we have that editing, and then again, you approve it. So, you get to work with those four people. I don't do the writing, but I am, as I said, the education specialist, that's what I came on for. So, when you have those bigger issues that we were, that really require brainstorming, I will be part of that team.
I understand. So, I don't have, I guess, the ability to ask questions of our administration. So, based on you just telling us that you have had times where you people have reached out over the last year of this contract, can you please send us a list of those times that people in your department has reached out? So, I can help to make an informed decision on whether this is a contract we wanna see moving forward.
Mr. Aguirre, I guess I'm a little confused about the process, and I'm saying that as a former school superintendent. Having worked in, both as, you know, at the table as a superintendent, I would normally either, as a person on the committee, expect that that request would go through the chair, and the, and the, the committee would decide that this is information that they are looking for, and then they would talk, they would then direct the superintendent to get that information for us. Or if the superintendent had that request, while we work for you as the district, it would be very difficult for us if we then start working for 10 different people to try to calculate who we're supposed to respond to and what information we're supposed to respond to with each. Um, so, I guess I would ask, and I, I...
Sir, to clarify my question.
My clarification is, when, when I receive a formal request from your district, we would be happy to provide whatever information. But you casually asking it to me while I'm at a podium this evening puts me in an awkward situation.
I understand, I'm only regurgitating what you mentioned, sir. So, a normal situation would be that we, if we're gonna decide if we wanna continue this process and this contract, we would get all backup information relative to the contract. Unfortunately, the way that we're operating, I guess, now in this district is that we can't ask for any backup information because we don't have a right to get it, because we can't ask questions. So, the reason why I ask you is because you said, sir, to us in this public meeting, there has been times over the last year that we have reached out multiple times to the school department, and with, no response came in. You said that at this podium.
Yeah.
All I'm asking you for is to please clarify that with some documents.
Ms. Curly.
So, I, I, I know that I already had a conversation with you about this. I actually said out loud, and so I'll say it here at this meeting, that JGPR, we did meet with them when I first came on board, there was a, a request. We, we had a running Google Doc where they were requesting information. We did initially, it was like, we got information out, it got stalled, we added more, it got stalled. They did pieces on all of the new principals, they did a piece on me, some other things, they, and then, we probably, in the fall, I think we did some work internally, we collaborated around getting some pieces out. We, um, so, I've already said that we have not gotten five to six pieces of information out, and that there has been a lag in information on our part in getting things out to the, in the firm. I mean, that, that's a fact.
Exactly, Ms. Curly, I'd like to also clarify for you that we often give suggestions, they're not demands. So, we might reach out and say, "Hey, it's teacher appreciation month. If you're doing anything for teacher appreciation, you might wanna let us know what's going on with that." That's a request that may have come from one of the people in our office, uh, are an example of. And you may decide, yes, this is something we wanna do, or this is not something that we wanna do. Um, and I, maybe teacher appreciation is probably a bad example because it was a right, but, but there are lots of different things that, that we, we do send out requests like that. And we also suggested a couple of things in the summertime that, you know, sometimes by the time we got the information, wasn't necessarily timely, but we, again, those are the first months under the new administration. And so, I absolutely support that we were all working together to try to figure out the best rhythm and how to manage that and to get that, that data out there.
Yeah, my last comment is just, uh, what I was trying to get at, sir, was to try to figure out if we can make an informed decision on this contract. And quite frankly, in this district, where we're trying to get as much money as we possibly can to do what we need to do, give salary raises and the like, $50,000 is a lot of money for us to figure out. It might not seem like a lot to you or to whoever, but every $50,000 starts adding up. And I'm telling you that we'd voted for $50,000, we didn't vote for $50,000, but we expended $50,000. So, that's the nature of my questions, isn't to try to sandbag you, to try to get you put in a tough spot. That's not what I'm doing. All I'm trying to do is to try to figure out, should we go forward and spend $25,000 over the next year that we didn't know about on this program when we're gonna be very strapped for money to pay for raises and all the other things we have to? I yield, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, I absolutely understand. As I said, I was 12, uh, 10 years as a school superintendent and 12 as an assistant before that. I sat at the table for many years with, you know, with those kinds of difficult questions. I understand where you're coming from, and I'm happy to help in whatever way I can. As a matter of fact, I'm the one who, who said to Superintendent Curly that if it would be helpful for me to come this evening, I would be happy to do so, so that you could talk to me directly.
Okay, Mr. Dias?
Um, just, um, a, a general overview, I don't know how much you focus on, on our, um, social media. Um, do you believe there's things that we could be working on as a district when it comes to our social media usage?
Absolutely. I think, I, I think I would answer that yes to any district that asks me anywhere. There's absolutely more we can always do on getting the message out. One of the things I would say to you is that the, the better you are at communicating to the community, that you have a, a base of knowledge, a base of information that they can access, the more you control the narrative. So, in other words, when you have, and I often suggest that being basically the website. Your website, and I'm, and I haven't gone on it in, in weeks, so I'm not talking, I'm, I'm talking hypothetically. A school district's website should be up to date and should have all the relevant information that any parent, any community member would like to find, and they should be able to find it within a couple of clicks. Because when they can't find it quickly, they're on social media asking questions, and other people are asking questions, and then there are these conversations that go on. Um, sometimes also, when we post on social media only, that information gets lost because of more things that get posted. So, we post something in the morning, and we've posted four more things, it gets pushed down the page. When we put those things directly on the website, and we send the link to social media, we're now making sure that there's a place where that is stored, where it's, where it can be retrieved by anybody, even if it got pushed down the Facebook page, if you will. As a school superintendent, I posted every letter, every document, every news piece on my website, and then I would send a link to families, so they would get an important message from Superintendent Zinni, and there would be a link in the email for them to click, and it would bring them to the website. Why? Because I didn't want the rogue families or the rogue people on Facebook with misinformation. I wanted to control the narrative. Now, in a big district, remember, I was in small districts at the end. I started in urban, but I ended in small districts. It's easier to do that. In larger districts, it's much more difficult to have that level of control and to manage all of that. But those are the kinds of suggestions when we work in the bigger picture around community, communication plans, and how to be most effective and how to communicate, that's one of the recommendations that we do, is that you have a place where all of your information lives, and you consistently drive people back to it so that they know they have the information at their fingertips and they can find it easily.
Um, thank you. Um, how much is it to, um, or, I don't know if it's already in our contract or not, for you to, um, your organization to, um, utilize our social media and run our social media? Is that an extra cost, or is that something that now has to be allocated, something in the contract already?
As I said, where you've already got social media accounts and a website, we can't go in...
If we were to make new ones, I understand.
Yeah, if you knew one, we would have to then, it would, it would start with the website, and then we would have to, to go from there. I couldn't give you a quote in the school committee meeting, I'd have to go back and talk to the digital department, but we certainly could put together a quote for something like that. But it would not be part of the scope of work that your contract currently puts out. Your, your contract is for public relations work, that division, it does not include the digital division at this time.
Okay. Um, and my last question is, um, do you have any, if we do, um, put social media posts out on our own, do you have any do's and don'ts that you could provide, just, just generic, I'm just curious?
Sure. So, I actually do a full workshop on communication. We do one that's specifically designed for school committee, but here's a...
How much? Don't mean to cut you off, how much?
Again, I would have to look at that, but probably a two-hour workshop, we're probably looking at maybe $1,000 to come in to do that. Um, but a couple of things I would say to you right off the top, social media for each of you, don't. One of the things that people don't, uh, I'm just gonna be very honest with you. People in your community will not separate you as the community member, you as the parent, you as whatever, from you as the school committee person. And even when you say, "I am posting as a community member, not as school committee member," you're posting as a school committee member. So, you asked for a couple of suggestions, so I'm just giving you one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I...
I would say another one, yeah, that I would...
Um, I apol, I just wanted to clarify my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I wasn't referring to me personally or any...
No, I wasn't talking to you personally, I was referring just in general.
Okay.
I know, the other, the, another suggestion I would say is, you speak in one voice. I'll give you an example. We had a situation where we had, um, some graffiti that could be construed as perhaps a threat. It was just a date, and then, you know, a kind of an R.I.P. situation. Um, it got out to the community. We had a very good idea of who was involved with that. We were working collaboratively with the police, and based on the investigation, and I won't give you a lot of details because we're just gonna keep it more broad, the police was comfortable in saying that it was not a credible threat. So, we put out a statement to that effect, trying to calm our families down, and it did for a little while, until one of our kindly board members reposted that statement and added the, just simply to it, "If anyone knows who was responsible for this, please let the building principal know." Once that went out and people saw the statement, their question was, "How can you say it's not a credible threat if you don't know who it was?" That person had the best of intentions when they posted that on social media, but by adding a little phrase, they changed the message to a lot of people and caused fear and escalated the situation rather than de-escalate it. One of the things that we're really good at, if, if you didn't use us for the pieces of content, if nothing else, one of the things that our company is really good at is knowing the right words and the right things to say. Not to, again, spin the situation, but to tell the truth, but to tell it in a way that's responsible and can control the, the narrative. Sometimes it's just a little phrase or a, one change of a word makes a significant difference in how it's perceived and whether we create undue panic or we create calm in a situation that requires calm. So, those are the kinds of things that I would suggest. Sometime, I, I, I do believe that when people post on social media sites, they have the best of intentions overall. Not always, but usually. Um, but I think sometimes they don't realize the unintended consequence it could have. And when you're asking an administration to manage a district this size, and there are multiple voices, one voice is my, if that, that's my number-one recommendation.
Thank you. Um, and again, thank you for, um, coming before the committee tonight. Um, it was very insightful, 'cause I know, speaking for myself, I had, um, a few questions about the contract. I know other members did as well, and, um, it was very valuable information, so I do appreciate it. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further for Mr. Feeny? Thank you.
Just, just for the minutes purposes, last name is Zinni.
Oh, Zinni, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Feeny, I'm sure is a great guy. If he wants to meet up afterwards for a beverage, we're all set, but in the meantime, uh, Mr. Zinni, Paul Zinni, and as I said, I'm very happy, uh, anytime that I can be of help. Um, and again, I always suggest that you work through one person, but if you were, if you feel that it's important for the school committee to have a statement on an issue, talk with the superintendent, and we will work with a subcommittee of you... the superintendent, and we will work with a subcommittee of you to craft that for you and help you with the messaging. That's what we're here for. With that, I say good night.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay. We're going to go back now to item number 11, approval of contracts. Under the new contracts, we have, I guess, four, and then we have a grant contract for Roberts. Any holds on the first four contracts? Colin, which one you got?
Yes, all of them.
All right. Let's start with the first one, Century Paving, Westall School.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pacico. So from the conversations that we've had earlier during the subcommittee report, appears that with a few different construction and extensions of the playgrounds, this one, I guess being included, we went over budget $700,000. So I just want to ask for this specific contract, it being $69,450, how much is that over budget?
Probably three quarters of it. So as I explained during the subcommittee meeting-
I wasn't able to watch that part, but thank you.
So as I explained during the subcommittee meeting, the construction of the four playgrounds were not the easiest playgrounds to build. Three of them were very difficult, and difficult because of the site, difficult because of location, and, and the method of construction that we had to use. So to make a playground safe, there's a few things you have to do, and on three of these sites, and the fourth one, just a touch, but on three of these sites, the topography of the, of the area was a problem. So we were on slopes, and therefore we have to level a playground to make them safe to use, so the swings stay one-sided. That's a little humor, sorry. So if you look at the four sites, the Westall, 2501 South Main Street, the Fonsica, and-
Spencer Board.
Spencer Board, Spencer Board, no, not Spencer Board.
It says furnished and installed two offices, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. So four playgrounds that were installed had those issues. So initially we're looking at, for instance, a Tansy was the other one. So in Tansy School, the location of the playground was in the rear of the building. Problem was that the design of the new play area to accommodate rules and regulations of distances in between pieces of play area, and also concern with rainwater, the playground in the back was susceptible to flooding at times, we moved the playground to the front of the building. It was a brand-new location that wasn't prepared for a playground, therefore we had to do some extensive excavating, bringing new soils, putting curb so we could pour the surface. Totally different than the original design of this. Second playground was Westall, again, on an extreme hill. The playground on one side is even with the ground, on the other side it's about five and a half feet tall. So therefore, it's required to bring in some kind of block system that would raise that playground, then install a fence to make it safe. 2501, the slope was not quite as severe, but at least four and a half feet tall, but it was a much bigger playground than at the Westall. And the Fonsica playground is built within the confines of the building. So we had to take out windows, bring small pieces of equipment inside to do large work. Try and get that work done by removing a couple of windows, passing a piece of equipment through the building in a safe manner, some whilst school was in session, others while it wasn't in session. So all of them became very complicated installations, which required extra excavation. I also sat here about a year ago, maybe not quite a year, at least seven months ago, eight months ago, and it was made very clear to me, and rightfully so, that we weren't going to give up one thing to get another, and that the playgrounds were very important to the schools that needed them. So therefore I had an obligation, because I stood here and said that we could do it, and I did it. I didn't do it, but the department did it, at a cost. And whether I took it upon myself to do this without the superintendent's approval, without the school committee's approval, guilty as charged. I needed to get it done in a timely fashion, and some of this work can't be done after the weather gets too cold. The Westall School was a situation where it took three days longer for it to dry because we waited so long in the season. Time is of the essence, and as much as I would like to say that once a month for school committee meetings works, it doesn't work with F and L. It just doesn't. It makes it very difficult for us to get work done. So did we spend more money than was anticipated? Absolutely, by $700,000. The $700,000 came at the expense of other things that we had to push aside. The initial plan for these four playgrounds was part of the $3.5 million allotment of funds that came from the city late in the year. That work, that money allowed us to do these, these playgrounds, and that's how all of this came about. So this in particular is a product of that.
On the four, so the $700,000 was four playgrounds, correct?
The $700,000 was extras on playgrounds, and most of it was excavation.
My question being, so I see Westall, I see Fonsica, should we, I don't see the other two-
As, as they were coming in, some you've already approved at a previous meeting, and there's, I think there may only be one left to come in. As quickly as they're coming in to us, I'm bringing them here. If you notice, when I wrote the letter, I'm writing it, that the project was already done. Again, two or three times I've been called that we're approving contracts that have already been done. These are state contracts, these vendors, estate vendors on that contract, we do our due diligence to make sure that these are the best prices for the district. There are also local firms that are here when we pick up the phone and answer that call, and as I said, I apologize to superintendent, to school committee, there were steps that I should have taken, and they will be taken in the future. I would just like the committee to know that the process is very, very cumbersome. And I'm not saying it shouldn't be followed, what I'm saying is it's very cumbersome. Any kind of holdup, any kind of hiccup forces us to do things that we normally wouldn't be able to do. It's, it's not cut and dry. Construction has never been, it never will be. It's the nature of it. And unfortunately, this came back and was quite a bit of money.
I really do appreciate the explanation, thorough explanation. I guess I would just say as one member, it's just like, and I understand some things come up, it's just the communication process of this, of course, I'm just hearing about this yesterday. And of course, we approved contracts with, again, buildings in the past that we didn't know were over budget as well. And I think it's just going forward, just having more communication with all of us. And I think we can say that about a lot of issues we have internally as a committee, but in general, I believe we communicate more and when these things come up, I think we all benefit from that in the long term. I do have a question on the contract, how this came about. So obviously the $69,450 contract has been fulfilled, the contract's completed.
Yes.
Okay.
The work is finished.
The work's finished, contract has been fulfilled, so it's a completed contract. With that being said, do we usually as a committee approve contracts before the work's done, or do we approve contracts after the work's done? Because we're approving a contract, we should, let me backtrack, what was the original amount? Obviously it went from $69,450. It's a valid question. So you said it was three quarters, so did we start around $20,000?
In each of these units, not knowing the extent, so we, we run a very tight ship as far as the amount of employees we have. So we don't have an estimator on staff, we don't have a surveyor on staff, nor an engineer on staff. Some communities do, maybe not for the school department, but on the city side. So without those people, it's very difficult for companies to come in. The playground company would come down, and they would give us a price on the playground. This is where you need to put it. Next step is bring in a contractor. Bring in three contractors to have a conversation with us, this is a site we need to do. Some of those contractors right out front would say, you're going to need X, Y, and Z, this is what the costs are going to be. Others would say, we need more information, we need to get, you know, some engineering done. So each item of everything we do would cost the district more money. I, as I said, I think that a lot of things contributed to this, one of which is time, the second of which is too much in such a short amount of time. We opened two schools this year, two buildings, and four playgrounds, and a whole host of other things, mold and a bunch of things. So it's a lot to ask very small departments, and we may think we're big, but we're tiny. We run on a shoestring. And with that kind of work to do and the amount of time you have to do it, and mind you, every one of these schools absolutely positively needed what they got.
I don't disagree.
It took us a lot longer to do it than I would have liked, but I would think that if you go to these buildings and ask those who took pictures, seen the kids, and how excited they were, and I'm not making excuses because, as I said, there isn't anybody to blame but right here, right at the podium, full responsibility, okay, trying to get everything done. The process is wrong. It's flawed, and I think a couple of things will change. First thing is, we won't take on more work than we can handle, period, done. This is what we can accomplish, that's all there is. The more we want to accomplish, the more expensive everything gets. The second thing is, I am going to do everything I possibly can moving forward, that contracts come here ahead of time, which means the process is slower, but that's the way, the only way to fix this. And other than that, I, we will work within budgets that are given to us, and I will absolutely positively let you know that it can or cannot be done way ahead of time.
And just to that point, it's more a question for the superintendent or whoever has the answer in terms of the, the policy we have in place, not just for this contract, but anyone, any, when we have a contract come before, is it supposed to be before the contract's fulfilled or after?
Before, before.
And, and this came after the work was fulfilled?
Yeah, I think that's-
Absolutely.
It's not, it's not, no, all right, it's not just with your department too, I've seen this be a habit, we're getting contracts after, to approve after they've already either been fulfilled or entered into, and, and just, not, not just you, but as a district, we need to rein back on that, and again, respect the authority of this committee. With that being said, I really, I mean, you gave an explanation as to why, I really don't have any further question at this time, but yeah, I think going forward, if we can really bring these contracts before, like you said beforehand, would really be beneficial. I yield.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Aguirre.
So on this item, what account was it coming out of? So when I look at these contracts, we have one for Precision Human Resources, three or four down. It states in the document, it's coming out of account XYZ. These don't have that. And one of the things that when, I was obviously upset that we had a deficit, and we talked about it, I don't particularly blame Mr. Pacico, because you were allowed to do this by other people with the finances. So it's not, like, I'm not trying to beat you up in any way, shape, or form, you tried to do what you had to do to get these done. As I said, all I wanted was a chance to be able to say, maybe we can't do all three, all four, we'll have to postpone because I didn't want to lose the Pace Center piece. But I still can't figure out where the money was going to come from for all these projects. And one of the things I asked the superintendent, which I guess is, I guess, God forbid now if you ask a question like that, but one of the questions when I had $700,000 deficit was, what is, how did this happen? How do we not know about it? She said she didn't know about it. How do we allow this to happen? So specifically related to this one, where was the money supposed to come from for this contract? Is there even an account, or is it just sort of general?
So less than $700,000, there was money put aside for playgrounds. It was of that $3.5 million, and it was what the list of items that the school committee had approved.
So the $700-
So this was on, this was on the, that list. So the projects were approved. My mistake, again, not the superintendent's, my mistake was, is that what you just said, should have did three instead of four. In hindsight, absolutely. I'm not sure which school would have been the unlucky one not to get a playground this year, but that is-
Are you saying the account though was the, because that's really all I'm asking-
The dollar amount, the dollar amount was on the list, so $3.5 million and out of the $3.5 million, yes.
So there might have been a million and a half for the three playgrounds, and now it turned into $2.2, some difference of $700,000. If all the other items are on that account, my question to the superintendent was, what do we, what is, what are we doing now? Because, so if we had an account with $3.5 million in it, and we had all these things to go, and then now we spent $4.2 million, what, where is that money coming from now? Because in the Precision Home HR, we have a list. I don't know, and that's why I ask the questions by email, amongst other things, it's not the only question I ask, but to try to figure out how was this happening? Because we shouldn't allow this to continue to go on, and we have some flaws in our tracking of budgets, obviously, because we just don't get all the information ahead of time. So do you know where the $700,000 got cut from?
No, I don't, I, no, I don't.
Can you try to get it to us?
Sure.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay. I have a motion in a second on Westall. Deb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
No.
Who's that?
What?
He voted no.
Oh, no, okay, no.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes. Next item on hold is the playground at Fonsica. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Dias.
Thank you. And that's perfectly well, I'm just going to go no this because I just can't in good conscience support this, but I think there needs to be, just so we can follow through on making sure we're following through on what we just said, making sure this doesn't happen again, can we, I mean, actually, I don't know, I yield for now.
We have a motion in a second.
Okay. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes. City Glass, Citywide Glass, 2501 South Main Street Panic Bars.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
So move.
I have a motion in a second.
Doesn't the person usually who puts the hold on get the floor first?
I need to see you, she was right next to me, I'm sorry. No, you, you still get to talk right now.
All right, fair enough. Just have, actually, an open meeting, one question on this. So for the, the only reason I'm not supporting this, because it says 2501 South Main Street, and in the actual contract itself, it's for 2501 and I believe Fonsica, is that correct? The Panic Bars?
No.
It's just for 2501?
Panic Bars, 2501 South-
Just 2501?
Yes.
Um, not for the Stone School, I'm, and exit doors throughout four floors of the Stone School and the Fallover Learning Center.
Stone School is 2501.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, I yield. A motion, if there wasn't already a motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on Citywide Glass Stone School? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. And finally, the last one in the top group is the Citywide Glass for Spencer Borden for $35,000.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Agia.
Can I just ask what this is? I know I can read, but it says to make two spaces out of area, just begs the question-
So it's a wide, so it's a wide open area and, and it's kind of a bump out in the Chestnut Street entrance hall that runs east to west. There's an area that overlooks the playground, the courtyard up on, on that level. There were two, the area was wide open, so we made two push-in, pull-out rooms and also can be used for office space right there out of glass.
So it's for student, uh-
Student or, yes.
Individual or counselors, somebody?
Exactly, yes.
And it's taking a blank space and making two moves?
Exactly.
Thank you. I yield.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Dias.
Thank you. Um, just on this matter, why are we installing this? What was, did they give you like a reason why they wanted this placed in there?
Every room is bust, every building is-
Just from the fire?
No, no, no. No, this is not from the fire. Every building is cramming, cramming for space. They're, they're having a tough time with smaller areas. So we've come up with a quick and cheap solution, this is extremely cheap, to put these small areas in. They also don't ruin the integrity of the building. So if we have to take this apart, it's just as easy to take apart than it is. It's a permanent, as long as we want it to be permanent, and it can be removed when we need it to be removed.
Um, if, if we do take it down, do we, and we put it up somewhere else, do we have to pay another $35,000?
Whoever, well, it won't be 35 because that includes the material.
Okay. Um, superintendent, do we know, and I'm just, the reason I'm bringing this up because I'm just trying to look for ways we can cut back on costs. Do we know the reason why we're, there was a request for these custom offices?
I would say that in short, there, across schools, we, we, there is a space issue. And so sometimes classrooms that had been used for people to pull out small groups and things like that are no longer available. And we've had to move because we need the classroom space. And so in this case, that we needed to relocate people and they are, so they're using the two office spaces to do-
So this more for student use, like, or just more for administrative?
Oh, no. No. It's described in the, it's described as two office pull-out spaces. So it's, it's where students will be serviced.
I yield. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Deb?
You do.
Discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Roberts Musical Instruments. We have a number of pieces of musical equipment there.
Motion to approve with a question?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Dias.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to support this, but again, just looking at the price tag, I was just wondering if we looked anywhere else or searched anywhere else for the equipment?
Yes, I provided all the quotes for, secondary and third quotes for the instruments. They're in a package that I submitted with this original.
I only saw one on there, but maybe, I couldn't misread that, but I, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Agia?
I just want to compliment you on the document that you provided with the Title I Director. It talks about what you were gonna buy, had various places that said how much it cost, and we went with the cheapest vendor. So we always look at, did we go to the Fall River folks, the locals? You were very clear, you were, Mr. Farias, creating this, and that's what I think helps us to just approve things. So great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Do you have a motion and a second? Give it a roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Under continuations, we have two there. Power School and Precision Human Resources. Any questions on either of those?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
Just one question going forward, the special education contracts. Just administration foresee scaling back on paraprofessional staffing going forward from outside agencies?
I think I would say that the goal is to be able to dial back on any kind of, use of any kind of staffing agency because it, you know, as people have said, it is actually more expensive to contract out. But in high need areas, we, we do contract out because we are trying to provide services to the greatest number of students that we can. And so I don't, our efforts are ongoing in terms of trying to hire people, but I don't know that we will be able to just stop agency staffing. I think that the need will remain.
I, I guess I was more worried about budgetary concern. Was, is there any pullback for budgetary concerns going forward?
Sure. So we have had that discussion internally where we are making sure, you know, we're not hiring these paraprofessionals for the average kindergarten classroom or something like that. They are in high needs areas. So at this, we're at a point right now that if we're, if we have a need, if the need arises for an agency paraprofessional or there is an existing need and we have the agencies who are reaching out to us saying, hey, I have a person, we have an internal discussion about the level of need and you can see in this case, we moved forward with a hire.
I, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
So I, one of the items on the agenda for Wednesday's special ed meeting is staffing. I just think it's very clear. I've been on this board for a long time. We have never had to take any votes to authorize the superintendent when we cannot find someone in a high needs position, which is all of these positions. The hundred people that the union keeps coming up here and saying, we've got all these vacancies, we've got all these power vacancies, we've got this. When they're saying that, there's money in the budget for every one of those positions that are vacant.
Well, there's, that means there's money for about half of them because in some cases it does cost twice as much. I know we have already talked about this. There's a misunderstanding. At one point, I, it was given, it was stated that I was authorized to hire up to X number of people. We have maxed out. I have since learned from you that I didn't actually need the authorization that you offered. And so we can move forward with the hiring of additional agency teachers in the same way that we did with this paraprofessional. We are not getting candidates from the agencies though. It's, it's not as if we are getting people and we keep saying, no, sorry, we don't have the funding. There are few and far between at this point that we're able to get staff from the agencies, but we will continue to partner with them as candidates present themselves.
Thank you. So when we have 100% of the budget and 50% of the year gone by, if the cost is double, we still have the money to fund every one of these positions. Or we should. Because we're 50% way through the school year, basically. So long and short of it is, we have, we should have money to fund these agencies. And in my mind, as one member, I'm gonna be pushing to hire as many as we have to, whether it's the traditional way or a non-traditional way. And we have no, we have to fill the positions. These are all high needs. Inclusion is high need, paraprofessionals are high need, the sub-separates are high need. So I know you get it. I just want to make sure that this committee is understanding that. Don't come after you later when you've hired people at a, at a higher rate. We need somebody to staff these buildings. So you have my support to add as many as you have to, as far as I'm concerned. I yield. Thank you.
All right. Anything further? Can I get a motion to approve both then?
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, we're gonna jump back to 12.4 First Read Superintendent's Recommended. 2026 Budget Priorities is presented by Tracy Curly.
So we were able to put together the draft budget priorities for FY '26. Uh, we did this, of course, using, you know, obviously the, you know, internal discussion. We were able to reach out to staff and families to get their input as well. I would just point out that the, the two biggest vote-getters in everybody's top two, you know, majority of top two for the staff as well as families was really around the human resources piece and hiring qualified teachers for our students and then also specific to meeting the social emotional needs of our students. Those were two big ticket items. I feel like they are well represented in these budget priorities and so I appreciate your taking the time on the first read.
Motion to approve first read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on first read. Discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-5 is a discussion and vote to approve the envelope HVAC request for qualification as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
So moved?
Any discussion on that? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia.
Is there any, I guess no one else has a question. My question is just, what, the answer that we asked at the subcommittee was, have the administration come back to us with some sort of information relative to, at the end of this project, who's gonna pay the bill? And I'm looking for an answer because I, for one, don't want to fund stuff that's just a waste of money because we are not gonna be able to fund it in the end. So I asked that at the subcommittee. We got, we, that we received something. Uh, I asked earlier to the superintendent. The answer was, we got nothing. So I guess I'm asking, is that true? We have no information since the subcommittee relative to who's gonna pay this bill?
So I, again, until we do the survey, I could, as I said, I guessed that the millions of dollars that we're talking about in this particular piece. And I would say that as we are developing a capital improvement plan and we do that, that capital improvement plan every year, we would be plugging these into that plan, which is how we've handled it every year. Is that capital improvement plan has what we think are gonna be our priorities. HVAC, in light of everything that's happened over the last year, would rise to the occasion along with playgrounds and roofs that are gonna be needing repair. And that would be, again, as you said earlier, the $150,000 is what we normally, $150,000 is what we would normally take care of on the school side, everything under that, which is boiler installations, things like that. And everything else would end up going to the city side. And as I, the HVAC stuff, some of it may fall under a grant opportunity as we did with the ESF funds and, and Henry Lord and Talbot and the BMS systems that we installed in Spencer Borden and Sylvia. Those were all grant opportunities that would have went over to the city to pay for those bills. We had the grant money to take care of it. I don't, I don't believe that that opportunity is gonna arise in the next four years. We're gonna have grant opportunities to do energy-saving projects. So my guess is, is that once we're finished with the, with the survey audit slash look at everything we do in the air quality realm, we're going to have some major requests to the city per year for probably the next five to seven years.
Yeah, so I guess the question's at the, towards the superintendent. At the subcommittee meeting, I thought it was quite clear. I didn't think it was ambiguous. I didn't think it was rude or I didn't think it was overstepping my bounds. I don't think it was asking emails that are threatening or trying to give you a hard time. What I did ask was that before this comes to the full committee, that you talk to the city and get us some sort of document or some confirmation that says the $150,000 that Mr. Pacico just said is still in play. Because I said at that meeting, I will not vote for this if it's just a total waste of money, that the city is not gonna do their commitment to spend over $150,000. Now, I guess my question pointed is, how did that conversation or dialogue with the city go since the subcommittee meeting? And was there one, I guess, is the pertinent question?
So I think I misunderstood your question because the question that I put forth or the statement that I made was that there is a question as to who is going to pay for this project. So the question I asked was around coming out of the report, who is going to pay for this capital project?
And what's the answer?
That we needed to look at the numbers. Gotta see what that looks like. Let's see what, let's see.
So-
So are you asking me, was there a commitment from the city? We are going to, whatever it is, we're going to cover? No, but I did not ask the question that you were looking for. I, I misunderstood the question.
So at the meeting, we talked about it being conservatively $25 million. We talked about 50. Let's just cut it in half. $25 million. So we do this report, which is probably gonna cost a couple hundred thousand dollars. We do this report, we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars. It comes out and says we need $25 million in repairs over the next five years to get these systems up to where they need to be. Who is gonna pay for the $25 million?
If I could just interject one more thing, the, the capital improvement plan is probably $45 million already, our plan. And some of the stuff that will come out of this report is already in our plan. The new HVAC systems, the operating systems. We have 20-year roofs on brand-new buildings. We keep calling them new, but they're 20 years old, 22 years old. Life expectancy on those roofs is just about done. So we are gonna need a million or two on a Fonseca roof, on a Spencer Borden, I should say, not Fonseca, Spencer Borden, Green, Sylvia. Those buildings need roofs. They're gonna be needing them very shortly. It's all on the capital improvement plan already and some of that is gonna come out in this report. The HVAC system's in similar shape. It's all gonna come out on the report. Some of it's already in there. Whether or not the, the, the school, the city council is going to bite at each one of the years, so to speak, it's a five-year look ahead, I don't know. I don't know if the city is gonna fund it or, I don't. Our obligation is to put the plan together and that's exactly what we do each and every year. And we're about ready to submit the next one soon.
And you know, already, we asked this at the meeting, you basically know already a lot of this information. This isn't anything totally new.
But again, it's my, I, and, and, Mr. Agia, I go back to the conversation we just had 20 minutes ago. I'm not an estimator. I'm guestimating as much as I possibly can with the knowledge that I already have. And to my best guess, you're absolutely right, it's a $50,000, $50 million endeavor. When a roof today is $2 million, it doesn't take long to spend $50 million. And the HVAC systems are twice as much, three times as much, four times as much. We spent $15 million, $17 million of ESSA money on two buildings and didn't finish everything that we could have finished.
So I guess the finance piece is where my sticking point is, is that we have a indirect cost agreement slash city agreement. In that agreement, it states that $150,000, the first $150,000 of a repair, the school committee would pay. Over that, the city's going to pay. And all I'm asking for is an answer to, is the city going to continue to maintain that posture? Because that's what the agreement is. And that's what I was hoping that you'd have dialogue with them to get, is the city going to maintain that posture?
To the best of our ability, we work with you guys on all the projects. I don't, I don't, and I don't know anything's changed. Once they roll down, we look at the, well, we sit down, talk to people and say, how effective is this? How can we bond for it? Where is their money? Is there a grant around? We look for, we look for opportunities to fund all these projects, and they're all worthwhile. It's just, if someone says to me, can I bond $50 million tomorrow? I'll give you the answer right now. I don't believe we can. But if he comes in piecemeal like he does on mostly everything else, we can work together.
So you're not, you're stating that the $150,000 agreement is still in place, so the school committee is not going to be on the hook? We can't afford to bond, to pay the bonds or anything on these major projects. So that's what I'm trying to get at, is let's let everybody on the committee know what we're voting for. And if we're not, we don't have the money.
Like I said, like she said, it's up, it's up to the city council. I'll bring the proposals down and they'll vote on it whether they want to do it or not. We'll make our best pitch, depending on how we shake, it all shakes out. But there's a number of things we're doing right now, and we're going to keep going to improve the schools for the kids. That's it.
How much is this going to cost, Mr. Pacheco? And where's that money going to come from?
The survey piece? I don't know. I don't know exactly how much. You, you may have hit the number, 200,000?
And where is it proposed to come out of? Is that a city's expense or is that a school's expense? Because it's over $150,000. Is that?
So I guess we'll have to make that decision when we negotiate that price.
Yep. So we don't have a line item within our budget that's slated for this? So we're going to create the survey, figure out the money, and then figure out afterwards how we're going to pay for it, whether it's the city or us?
Well, we know what the cost is.
I don't know what that cost is going to be. The RFQ is not a price.
Yeah, I know. I'm well aware.
Right, you know, it's a qualification piece, so basically you sit in front of the person who is the person you think is most qualified to do that job, and that firm would come in and negotiate after talking about what you're offering, what you, what you're asking them to offer, would negotiate that price.
And how much?
I can't approve that, it's coming here.
How, how much money does the Superintendent say that we have to fund this?
Of the 50 million?
No, of the, of this, what's before us, the survey. So the survey, let's say it comes in at 200,000. Where are you proposing to fund that from? And is that going to be a sort of a back-and-forth with the city? Because it's a city capital project, they own the buildings, you know, is it going to be the city's side or is it going to be our side? And are we going to have to come up with, let's just say 200,000? Where is it that we are proposing this money come from before this gets before us for the vote? I guess that's a clear, simple question.
And I don't have an answer for you.
That's also a clear answer. Disappointing, like, you get what I'm saying? It's very frustrating, we're going to vote for a $200,000 expense, and we don't know right now what's coming from them, from ourselves.
I don't know, like, I don't know which line item it's coming from. I don't.
Yeah. Or do we even have it? But this, I guess this is my heartache to try to say, we're going to vote for something, we don't know how much, we don't know where the money's going to come from to pay for it. And if they tell us that we need $50 million, I don't know where the money's going to come from, from that. But I just have a hard time with how we don't know, we don't project forward how we're going to do that. So I yield, thank you.
Mr. Corey, then Mr. Dias.
Mr. Pacheco, I'm sorry for this line of questions, but I know that at the Subcommittee meeting, we looked at this as a very proactive plan. Given the heartache that we suffered last summer, given the failure of the HVAC system and a couple of our schools create a mold issue, and a plan like this is coming out of that to try to improve our situation moving forward into the future. And at the Subcommittee meeting, there was a general positive attitude about adopting this stance. I just have a basic question. Are we available for any MSBA funding in regard to projects like this?
No.
Okay. So the money's got to come from somewhere. But we know that once you put something down on paper, then it will be enacted at that point. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and my no was kind of quick. So as of right now, there is no program that would be able to help us out. What, what the hope is, is that depending on what this looks like, it's not going to be a major bite. It's going to have to be very, very methodical as to how we attack this.
Absolutely. It's going to come out one, one project at a time.
Yes, and, and we're going to have to pick and choose. And again, part of this report is going to be for that company to help us prioritize what we may already know, but to prioritize our worst, worst to our best so that we can lay out a capital improvement plan that makes sense. I, I got to say this because I think it's important. We are terrible tenants because we pay no rent. So even though the responsibility for the schools falls on the city's side, we are the ones using them. So we don't generate any funds, we don't in any way help. And over the years, this committee, along with other committees, have tried to help on the city's side. Where we had funds, where we had one-time money that we couldn't put into a budget situation, we used. And it was helpful. A lot of the work that we got done across the districts, some of the playground work and other things were not funds that we could end up putting into the budget. I don't think that that totally goes away forever, but I understand that we are going into some uncharted waters here, and we don't know what our future looks like. So I can't argue with the $150,000 is what we have. Mind you, like everything else, $150,000 today is not $150,000 five years ago. And I could put in two boilers and three boilers for $150,000, and today I can barely do one. So I, I understand the line of questioning, and it's true, $150,000 is what we should be spending. We wouldn't have a lot done, so.
Mr. Pacheco, when, when the former building, when the former Dury High School building on Elsbury Street was built in the, in the, in the 1970s, nobody could project the disaster that that building ended up being. As far as the design of that building and the HVAC systems in that building was a complete disaster. I spent 27 years working inside that building, went home many days with sinus issues because of the failure of the HVAC systems. With the windows not opening and the systems functioning, it just wasn't the best as far as efficiency is concerned. But when, when the improvements necessary to remediate those conditions existed, then the city and the school committee came up with the money at those junctures. I know because Johnson Controls was the company that the city used to remediate that situation. And my office happened to be on the roof level where they accessed daily. So I saw the work that was going on to remediate those conditions on a daily basis. So I know that at, at last week's Subcommittee meeting, when this plan was proposed, everybody felt really good about it. Because what we went through last summer was just awful. And this is what we're trying to prevent moving forward. We have these buildings, we're responsible for their upkeep, their efficient upkeep. And I think you're doing a great job at mapping that situation out. I'm not here to praise you, I'm here to say that we will find a way to fund this moving forward, but it's all very necessary. I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. So just going back to the $150,000 or whatever the price may be, so if it go, I thought I heard something about if it goes to a certain threshold, the city council could take this up on its own, is that accurate at all?
What normally would happen is we would go to the city council and request funds over the $150,000. If a project came in at 10, at $10 million, then we would ask them for the full $10 million to fund the project. If it came in at $300,000, we would ask them to fund the project. It, it's been done, we've done it before, and we've been successful. But it, we are an entity that has a lot of asks. And the school committee, the city council very seldom said no. They also are good partner with MSBA. So when we need 20% of a project, then we have the ability on the city's side to help out much more than we are with these smaller projects. Over the years, the city has been the recipient of some extra funds from us because we've had the extra funds to, to do some of the projects. But we don't know what that future looks like, so.
Right, no, I understand, and the city isn't, no, doesn't have a lot of cash, I understand that. So we, if we approve this, we're basically, for lack of better words, approving a blank check. We, when you go out for the qualifications, you wouldn't bring that final quote before the committee for final?
So what will happen is, is we will advertise this piece. Once the piece is advertised, we will interview the firms, and this is done on the city's side. So we're there as one representative of the designer selection board, and we will sit in a room and interview each of the companies when we get to that point, when we pick, when we number them one, two, and three, for instance. Then we will interview the first company, which is how we do this. The number one company gets interviewed. If we don't accept that company, we go to number two. Okay? But by qualifications, not by price. Okay? Price comes in after you pick the company. If you can't negotiate the contract with the company because it's way out of whack, then you would move on. But you, you can't keep going down that list because you don't, they don't have to disclose the money until you technically have chosen them. That's the idea for the qualification. Because if this was a bid process, it would be totally different. But you don't pick engineering and design people by bid, you pick them by qualifications.
No, I appreciate that explanation, thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Have we ever done a survey like this before, or the equivalent of this? For like the window projects or whatever?
So the window projects, we wouldn't because MSBA does that work for us.
But have we ever done a survey similar to this over the last whatever years? If so, who paid at that time?
On the school side, I don't remember us doing a request for qualifications.
I mean, pay for a survey or some kind of engineering for buildings, whatever else?
We've had some work to do, yes.
And does the city pay that?
So it's small money, though, it was only a $30,000 or $25,000.
So because it was under 150, we paid?
We were looking at a, we were looking at a high level. So what I'm saying is, is that this is, this is scratching the surface. This is not a 30,000 foot view.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, the 30,000 we paid out of the school department. If it was 180,000, the city would have paid.
My guess is, is that we would have went to the city if times were different. Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Almeida, to the Chair. Sir, if this came in at, let's say 200,000, and I'm assuming because it's January, it's going to be in this fiscal year, we're trying to get this moving quick. Do we have $200,000 in an account that we can pay this?
I will get you the account by the end of the week, yes.
There is a, an account, just, you don't have it right here, but you do have an account where we could pay the 200,000. Thank you, I yield.
Okay. Anything further? I would ask, do we have a motion and a second?
We do.
Okay. Deb, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
No.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Yes. Twelve six is a discussion and vote to approve the transportation invitation for bid for yellow bus services.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
The renewal request for Tremblies. I have a motion and a second, discussion, hearing none, Deb call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve eight is a second read and vote to approve the proposed 2026 budget calendar as presented by Kevin Almeida.
So you have the budget calendar in front of you. The budget calendar follows roughly what it's been the last several years. The school committee presentation will be held in February, the weeks following February vacation, there'll be departmental meetings and school meetings that we will hold. We will then have a release of the budget to the public. Once we do that, we'll post the, we'll advertise the public hearing, we'll have the public hearing scheduled tentatively for April 14th, where the school committee will adopt the budget around that time. Prior to April 15th, we typically have the joint meeting with the city council at that time, where we discuss the budget with the council at that time. The budget will then be submitted to the city clerk on or before May 15th, and we go to the city council typically in June, depending on whenever we get called down.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the calendar, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. Just real quickly on, on the, on the budget, if we, just a simple request, if we could just put the budget up most, I don't believe the most up-to-date budget we have on the school department website is there, we can?
I believe that it is.
I think, actually, I think it is, but.
FY25?
Yes.
Yeah, there are, there are two links on the CFO page, and one of them, I mean, at least two links, but I know that there's one link to the budget presentation, and then there's a link that says updated FY25 budget.
Okay, I, I yield then, thank you.
Okay. So can we get a vote on this one? Deb, give it a call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve nine is a discussion and vote to approve the end-of-year report as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve with a question.
Motion with a question.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. I don't know if you had a present, actually, I'll yield if you, if you have a presentation you want to.
Just the, the quick, the quick presentation is that the, the report was submitted, and for FY25, the budgeted amount has, we've met, the city has met net school spending. Typically, the process is the state will certify the report, and when they certify the report, it's typically around like February vacation, the February timeframe. At that point, the numbers do typically change a little bit. A lot of times, we'll see changes in the chart of school assessments at that time due to enrollment, and it changes as the year goes on. But at this point, we've, budgeted-wise, we've met net school spending.
I still have the floor, just, just want to get understanding of some of the finances. And I put this in the request, and I think it's very important. I know the city is required by charter to submit a five-year fiscal plan, a five-year fiscal forecast. Do we have any document, like a fiscal forecast for the next couple of fiscal years?
I do.
Do you foresee a deficit in the next few years?
The next couple of years? Nope.
Next five?
We, in the next five years, we'll, we'll see, we'll have to time, we've started the process of tightening the belt, but I think we're okay as of right now.
Okay, and, and that's, and the forecast includes the most up-to-date negotiate bargaining numbers we have?
It was, it was done a couple months ago.
Couple months?
Yep.
So it's not the, the most up-to-date, that's not include the most up-to-date numbers that we have?
It's, it, it's as updated as it can be at this time.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll yield for now, I, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Agia?
Just, we are on the end-of-year report, right?
Yes, sir.
The only question I had is if we could get some further clarification, not now, but through the, the discrepancy in the staffing, you know, the retirement costs?
Yep.
If we can get some further detail on that, I'm just curious of how that goes because I think we sometimes don't understand that we add more staff, there's other things that come in. So if that didn't happen, and the city was just basically at 100%, we would have a million dollars extra that, so I think just getting for the education of everybody, how did that happen? It'll help us moving forward. Thank you, I yield.
You got it.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 13 is informational, retirements, appointments, transfers are in there also now.
Motion to accept and place on file.
I have a motion and a second, Deb call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?[1702.61] Mr. Agia.
On the, um, I had emailed earlier today about our position not being on the agenda. Is there any response to that, or...
Yes. So it, it doesn't end up on the agenda until a letter is received, um, in the school committee office, and the letter wasn't received in time to get it on the agenda.
So it'll be on the next one.
Yes.
Thank you. I yield.
Uh, Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item fourteen is new business. Anything to come? Mr. Dias.
Thank you. I, I have two items, um, to come before, and I, I put it in a request, and, um, it's not on the agenda tonight, so I should bring it up now. Um, I, I, I personally believe, um, and I believe it would benefit this administration, it would benefit, um, all parties involved, it would benefit the entire city, that we undergo the facilities and operations and audit, and audit, and audit of the, the entire department.
But it was sent over. It's forty-eight hours before the meeting.
Yep.
It was, it was sent several days before the meeting to you personally. Yes.
So it's not really new business, is it?
Well, it wouldn't be, it's only something within forty-eight hours.
I'm, I'm following school...
We can't hear, just so you know.
I, I, I'm following school department policy, which requires me to submit an item to go before on the agenda.
I, I, go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, with that being said, um, I believe, and it was said, um, before we did the reorg, there would be some sort of comprehensive review or audit. I don't believe the Collins Center achieves that goal. There is a lot of different things we could look at and help improve the apartment, and help Mr. Barchico, and help the superintendent. So I like to make a motion at this time that we authorize the superintendent to search for auditing firms, including the state auditor, to audit the facilities and operation department. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Um, I believe all of our accounts are audited. I have no idea why we're going to be going down this road. Let's wait for the Collins Center report and see if it points light on anything that we may be able to do better, but, um, I won't be supporting this, I just want you to know. Ms. Pereira.
That was my question, the Collins Center, did we, what have we gotten back from?
We haven't gotten it back yet.
No. So we are, we, they are actually going to come out to do the in-person interviews, focus groups, and things like that, um, early spring. So we are getting documentation together and things like that, but they're not coming out until the spring.
And what specifically are they, specifically are they looking, looking for?
Looking at procedures, protocols, and the way we, like, do business, um, in the facilities and operations and human resources departments. It's not a financial audit. And they, you know, I did speak to them early on in the process when I first came on board to s, to get clarity around it. They make it very clear that they are, they are consultants, they're not auditors. They are, they are looking at kind of helping districts and other entities get to best practice, and that, that's what they're coming out to do.
So they're coming in to look, to see, are we, are we at best practice? If we're not, some suggestions on how to, how to get us there differently?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I yield.
We have motion, a, Mr. Agia.
So the rationale for my second is what I've said multiple times here. We, over the years, have had a discussion amongst the committee with the prior superintendent. We had a reorg that was suggested of the facilities and maintenance departments. During that discussion, it was proven basically to all school committee members, superintendent at the time, that we have a lot of issues that were deficient in those departments relative to management, things that were happening, relative to spending, policies, all kinds of things. The superintendent at the time indicated to this committee quite clearly that she was not going to bring back a reorg unless it made sense. Three months later, she brought back the reorg with zero changes to the reorg. At the time, she promised this school committee that if you vote for this reorg, we're going to have an audit to make sure we look at every single thing that's been happening over time, how it's been, any kind of discrepancies or anything. We still won't acknowledge the fact that that existed, and she stated that to this entire school committee. So the reason why I'm supporting this, and now I continue to speak to the superintendent about some of my concerns, is that we can't forget that there was issues. Moving forward isn't the only way we can try to figure things out. If we just keep doing the same thing, we're going to have some of the same problems. We need to do a deeper dive. I would encourage you to look at the scope, as I said earlier, for the review by the Collins Center, which was born out of the superintendent telling us she was going to provide an audit of the, these departments. And it was this department and the human resource department. And both of those departments had a lot of deficiencies. We were promised something, we didn't get it, but what we got was something that was totally generic. It's not sufficient, and it's not going to get us to where we need to. So I would implore the superintendent to try to get the, a combination of an audit, so we look back a little bit to try to figure out what happened, as well as a plan going forward. I hope you support this. I'm second to Mr. Dias's motion because this issue has been ongoing for over a year. The facts bore it out that we were promised something that we never got, and we still need it. I yield.
Uh, Ms. Pereira?
Um, I don't, ooh, I don't feel I was promised something I didn't get. We need to start using the word "I," not "we," because we don't always agree. I, I honestly thought what we were getting is what we're getting. We were looking at the department, reorganizing it to be the most, most efficient as possible. So what I thought I was promised is what I'm still waiting for. I think that if the, if our super, our current superintendent, if Dr. Curly, uh, takes a look and feels that an audit is something that she deems necessary, I'll be happy, um, to support her in that. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Deb, pli, Mr. Agia.
Yeah, just, uh, if you just look at the conversation that we had today about the procedures and, uh, overspending in that account and all that stuff, this should tell you something. Certainly tells me something. I yield.
Over, oh, sorry. Overspending in what account? You're talking about the seven hundred thousand? What account?
May I answer?
Yes. Well, I, I was like...
I'm just waiting for the chair to say.
Sorry.
Yeah, so I, what I was saying is, just regardless of who's at fault, I'm, we're not trying to do that, but we had a situation where there's been a lot of spending that overspent by seven hundred thousand under those departments. Now, what I've asked for in the past, and what Superintendent Ponset said she was going to do, was to look back to try to figure out what are those things? At that time, if we did what she had suggested, the policies and procedures would have been delineated more clearly, so we wouldn't be in the situation we're in today, passing contracts after they were done. All I'm suggesting is, I'm not saying anybody did anything illegal. What I'm suggesting is, is that department was so vast that we needed to look, have a deeper dive to look at what happened. That's all.
All right.
Thank you. I yield.
Call the roll, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Uh, can you state the emotion again, please?
It's to authorize the superintendent to search for an auditing firm to audit the facilities department.
No.
Ms. Larrabee.
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan.
No.
Mr. Chair, um, one more, um, one more item I wish to bring today, um, and this is actually, this is within forty-eight hours, and it's in regards to, um, what was discussed, um, with the power of the school committee. I just want to state that, again, I'm a firm believer in democracy, and facility, far over, in the far over public schools, I believe, has a duty to stand up, to my opinion, authoritarianism and centralized power, and protect the autonomy of this body. The opinion that was read before us today, if followed, would diminish our ability for school committee members to vote in good conscience and do our job. I believe it goes too far. I do agree with the superintendent. I believe there is ways that we can work together to request information in a more organized fashion, but that comes with communication, not going to others, but going to the individuals you believe are requesting too much information about. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we add to policy BDB, which is school committee officers that stays the chair must add any item to the agenda if it's requested by a school committee member. No question about it. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second with a question?
I have a motion, a second with a question. Go ahead, Mr. Agia.
Can I ask the parliamentarian what the current practice is for getting something on the agenda? Our policy?
Traditionally, I receive the information, and then if I, I look at it and I look at the value in terms of what it is for the whole, um, meeting, and I go with that. And we, then we have our, um, meeting before to go over the agenda items, and that's where it's hashed out.
So what is the, uh, school committee policy related to if we can't get something on the agenda as the parliamentarian?
Well, it's coming up now in new business.
With the process, just any time you bring it up? You don't have to do anything else, just bring it up? And we can discuss it?
Now, the chairman makes the agenda, doesn't he?
Yeah, yes, the chair does. There is a, a policy in terms of if something does not go on the agenda or for it to go on the, I believe it's the next meeting. I don't have it in front of me, but it, but there is a, a detailed section on that, and it was done several years ago as an amendment. I think you might recall that.
Yeah. I'm not sure of all the technicalities, but I believe, I believe that's what I was informed of.
So if we, if we pass the motion, I don't, like, uh, if we, if we can bring it up on the new business anyway, I guess there's no need for a motion. So anybody want, if we want to bring something up in new business, we can bring it up. Is basically what you're saying, that's chairman?
Yeah. Right, that's, that's what's going on right now.
No, I'm saying that's what you...
That's what's going on right now.
Right. So based on that, I'm going to withdraw my second.
Yeah. You're going to withdraw, you're going to withdraw your second, okay. Ms. Pere, Ms. Pereira?
I think there is a difference between bringing it up in new business and putting it on the agenda. I think my colleague all the way to the left knows that. He's trying to pigeonhole you in something, but that's fine. You play that game. Um, you guys can do that, I don't care. Um, my point is, I am all for, I agree, if we're on here, we should help determine what's on the agenda. But I would be more comfortable if it was like three, at least three committee members want to see something on the agenda. I will never vote for each committee member just deciding what's on the agenda. Like, that's, to me, doesn't make any sense. That's why we have a chair and a vice chair. Now, with that being said, if there's something that a particular committee member wants on the agenda that's not happening, that's not getting on the agenda, then that's a conversation to have because we should all, of course, be heard and have a voice. But if you don't have a significant amount of people agreeing with you, then bring it up at new business or go a different route. But I'm never going to vote for, like, yeah, everybody gets to pick what's on the agenda. What kind of meeting would that be? With that, I yield.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pere.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Colin, and then you have, Colin first.
If I may, if, I could be mistaken, but that's just basically the way, um, most governing bodies work. That's how the city council works. They submit any resolution that they can, and it goes on the agenda. And then again, this isn't, this is something that I wanted to bring up just now, just through this conversation. Wasn't, I know you mentioned you guys, it wasn't, this wasn't some sort of conspiracy to bring this up, this just happened because I heard about the opinion, so, and I believe it's important that we address it. This isn't a critique of the chair himself, it's just a critique of the process, which I believe is authoritarianism, not allowing items to be placed on the agenda from individual school committee members. That's centralized control, and that's the very definition of, of form of authoritarianism. But to that, let's do that.
Mr. Agia.
So I, I appreciate what Ms. Pereira said, and I think it actually makes sense. So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize if any three members of the committee email the sup, uh, the chairman that they'd like to request something beyond the agenda, that it gets put on the next agenda. That's exactly what she said, and it made sense.
See, look at us working together. Second.
That's fine. Go ahead. Deb, call the roll. Please state the... It's three members get together and, uh, or talk about an issue that's important and bring it forward as an agenda item. Do we, we have a motion and a second, Deb? Give it a rip. Thanks.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
No.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Uh, yes, that's fine. All right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one more, one more on this topic, um...
Can I ask what that vote was? I think I missed something.
Wait, 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 what?
Can I ask what that vote was? Because I think I missed something.
You made the vote.
No, no, the three, you seconded their motion. Three, three members get together, goes on the agenda.
No, I didn't know the vote. I didn't, I was missing who was voting.
No, that's what it was.
It was passed forward to...
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, I don't know who the two was, I think.
Yeah, I, 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 I thought I only voted.
Maybe it was just no, Mr. Bailey is...
Everybody else said yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. And the only reason I voted no because I, again, hold the opinion, an individual member, um, should be able to, but I, I do believe that is a, I do appreciate the collaboration. Secondly, on this point, um, I'd like to, again, request, if there is a memorandum of agreement, again, the opinion that was provided, again, on its face just wasn't accurate because it, because it says besides the superintendent, uh, the charter was misquoted in the opinion that was never provided to this committee. So I also like to make a motion that we suspend...
Mr. Dias, Mr. Dias, what are you talking about?
Mr. Chair, you read a, uh, an opinion from your corporation council.
Right.
And they, they quoted certain parts of the, of the charter section, and they just included, they just included the most important part, which is instead, besides the superintendent. We, we can't order around, give orders or directions to the superintendent's staff, but we can direct the superintendent. I just believe that the, the opinion itself is just not accurate.
Mr. Dias, this is, this will be discussed for another day, but it's, it's ordered but it's ordered directions of any school department employee, even with the approval of the entire school committee. So the superintendent, that's the document. We can vote as a group to get her to do anything, but you can't call her up and say, "I want the last four years' budget sent to me." It's not going to happen. She's got work to do.
Well, again, maybe there should be a contact person, but just to say, we have to go through a normal FOIA request. I understand that happened once with the city council earlier, but there shouldn't be, well, plenty of school committee members have requested information before, besides myself and Mr. Agia. I believe it's just being placed now, because, I don't know why, but in terms of working together, I'd like to make a motion that we refer to policy subcommittee, a request that the superintendent look at a way, a caveat of requesting information by school committee members.
Okay. We can have policy subcommittee, look at that. I'll put, I'll get the package from Mr. Rumsey and send it to policy subcommittee, okay. Anything further?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Agia.
And please ask that Attorney Assad weigh in on this tonight, on the spot. If we can have Attorney Assad just weigh in on this as well.
He already read it, the one I gave him.
No, I don't mean today, I'm saying like in the future.
Oh, I thought you said right now.
No, 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 I'm saying it just got brought up today. I've never seen it, just have him give us his opinion, thank you.
Anything further? Do we have a reason to go into executive session, Mr. Assad? I can't imagine we do.
Can't imagine, can't imagine why. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes for November eighteen, twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, regular school committee meeting, National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, grievance subcommittee meeting. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement, including hearing grievances relative to all professional teaching employees in the forward school system, including coaches Title I, teachers, nurses, occupational, physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the forward school system represented by the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the forward school system represented by the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all consular employees of the forward school system represented by the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety and security personnel, employees of the forward school system represented by the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service clerical employees of the forward school system represented by the Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement relative, including hearing grievances relative to all paraprofessionals employees of the forward school system represented by the Forward Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. We would reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Can I get a motion and a second?
Executive session.
Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia? Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Recede. We're back in session. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Present.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Anything further to come before the committee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for November eighteenth of the regular school committee.
Still moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, of the grievance subcommittee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
Didn't we have, we happened to hit it just right on the thirty minutes of citizen input?
Yeah, actually it was, because a couple of them gave us a minute back, and I added two minutes on for the discussion we had during that time.
But I'm saying, we don't, we're not missing any.
No.